Mr. Parker, let me know when we're ready.
Ready.
Wonderful. It's 6:30 PM on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. This is our work session and I'm now going to be leading the order. And I will please rise for our quick of allegiance. The flag is to the right, flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Next on our agenda is introduction to new hires. Do we have any new players that are here?
No.
Is there anyone here from public comments?
No.
So we'll just keep on going. Next on our agenda is policy review where we're actually going to flip it and do our independent audit presentation because we have our independent auditor here. Thank you for coming. And I just want to introduce you, I want to say your name correctly. Ms. Melissa Snat?
Snat.
Snat. Ms. Melissa, this is every year now, I'm sorry. Ms. Melissa Snat. And please take it away. Your presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me here tonight. What we're going to go through is this PowerPoint slide right in front of you. We put this together, I think it's a little bit easier to understand and go through the numbers where we ended up at June 30, 2025. So today we'll go over some required communications. We have a high level of the general fund results, so we'll go over those. We'll go a little bit deeper in your revenues and expenditures, exactly how we got there. We have the general fund fund balance as well as the five-year history. And then the school district does operate other funds, so we'll discuss those briefly. And then I provided you with a debt service on the schedule. On page three is some communications requirements and responsibilities of management and those charges of governance. Those charges of governance would be the board as well as the audit committee. You are responsible with selecting appropriate accounting policies, making sure they're implemented. The financial statements that you have, make sure that those are fairly presented in accordance with United States generally accepted accounting principles. Establishing internal controls, making sure you've selected good controls. And then doing a periodic review, making sure those controls are operating in accordance to the understanding. This compliance with all of your laws and regulations. Any contracts that the school district enters into, make sure you're compliant with those as well. Providing us as your external auditors with all of the financial records as part of this external audit process. And then setting a proper tone at the top, which is making sure there's a high ethics in the school district. I just want to say also, we did meet, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to ask you at the end?
Anytime.
Okay. So I just want to be clear as well for the public and any new board members. So establishing and maintaining effective internal controls. That's really working with the business office to make sure that they have good internal controls. Like, we don't work here.
Correct.
Right? And we don't look through those processes, but we do ask questions, right, about them.
Exactly.
So, okay.
It's more of like an oversight responsibility, making sure that there is a review being done. I know the audit committee can be utilized for that role as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. We did meet with the audit committee prior to today, took over these numbers. We went over everything in depth and in detail. So I really want to thank the audit committee for their time and commitment to this. Very robust discussion, I really appreciate it. So thank you so much. On slide four, so we, as our external auditors, we also have responsibilities as part of this process. The deliverables are the reports. We do have an independent auditors report that would be an unmodified opinion. It's the best opinion you can receive. Sometimes you might be referred to as a clean opinion, I might hear that word. We issued a yellow book report, that's a report on controls and compliance. Issue, we will be issuing a report on compliance for your federal programs. That's going to be your federal single audit. Most of the times historically, we've presented that included in the financial statements. Due to the federal government status, we unfortunately cannot issue those at the moment. But once we will, we will provide that with you as well. We've already done a lot of the testing, so we did not find any compliance issues. It's just a matter of getting that finalized. Extra classroom activities report, that includes all the student club activities. And then in one document, we have the required communications to those charges of governance as well as the management letter. We're happy to report that there were no fraud or illegal acts noted as part of our external audit. We didn't have any significant difficulties in conducting our audit. And there were no uncorrected statements, so any adjustments found were posted and corrected. And then no disagreements with management. We have come out here twice. So prelims is where we do the control testing. That was June 13th. We were out here for the week of August 25th for the field work. That's where we test the balances and the amounts reported in the financials. And then the New York State pension system for your non-teacher employees that got released on September 8th. I believe it was the latest that's been released this year or in this history. So let's go on to the numbers of the general fund. On page five is going to be an overview of your general fund. Your first column is your original budget. That's going to be the budget adopted by the voters. But it also includes your prior year purchase orders. So those purchase orders that had not yet been fulfilled get rolled into this year's budget from the prior year. Your final budget column, that would include any budget amendments or budget transfers made during the year. You should have seen those resolutions during the year. Actual results on your third column. And then you have your current year encumbrances or your current year purchase orders. Those will be fulfilled in '25, '26, so that will roll into next year. And then your variance. So we'll start at the top with your revenues. You anticipated your revenues coming in at about 78.5 million. You actually did 80.5 million, so it's about almost two million dollars better than anticipated. We'll go over that, but a large majority of that was your interest earnings. But we'll have more details on the next page. Your expenditures, so the money going out, that's going to be anticipated 80.6 million. You've actually only spent 74.5. You do have 760,000 of purchasers that will be spent next year. So exclusive of the encumbrances, you underspent the budget about 5.4 million. Again, we'll have those details in the following pages. There are some other financing uses that would be transfers to other funds. Originally budgeted for 925,000, but that did increase to 12.6 million. Majority of that was utilizing capital reserves that got transferred to capital projects fund. And then you actually only did 11.2. So most important number, net change in fund balance, that's your third line from the bottom. Net change in fund balance is what you anticipate using of your fund balance. So in your original budget column, you anticipated using almost 3 million of fund balance. What's included in there is 2 million of appropriated fund balance as part of your '24, '25 budget process. So that number should be familiar when you look at your '24, '25 budget. And then 982,000 of the prior year purchase orders. As we mentioned, those get rolled into your budget under the expenditure line, but you're using part of that fund balance to satisfy those. So you anticipated originally, you're going to use 3 million of fund balance, but you actually increased that to about 14.8, so a very large increase. So the two largest pieces, well, first was the 8.2 million. That was the proposition that got passed in January for the science lab. So that was the transferring of your capital reserve. So you're not necessarily utilizing unassigned fund balance, you're using that reserve being transferred. In addition, you also transferred 3.5 million of the capital reserve. That would be for phase two project. And then a small portion, 155,000 of that increase was related to a tax cert settlement. So you utilize part of your tax cert reserve. So you anticipated after all the budget amendments, 14.8 million using fund balance. But in your actual results, you actually used only 5.3. So from a budgetary perspective, it was about 8.7. So we'll talk about exactly what those underspending were as well as the revenues and expenses on the following pages. But you did fall within the 4%, and we'll go over those reserves. So let's talk about your revenues. We said your revenues overall came in over budget about almost $2 million. These are the various line items that make that up. Your property tax would be your largest revenue source at about 62.2 million. That generally comes in at the amount budgeted. The 127,000 relates specifically to tax surgiories that were settled during the year. You have your STAR reimbursement, that's part of the STAR program. And then another large item is going to be your sales tax. That's your non-property tax distribution from the county. You can see that performed better than budget, almost 350,000. That's basically on the economy, so how it's performing. We did see this trend across all of our school districts as well. Charges for services, that would include your day school tuition as well as your health services for other districts. That did come in about 268,000 better than anticipated. Most of that was related to your health services that you charged out. The 1.5 million, that's your largest, so out of the 2 million, 1.5 is solely related to your interest earnings. So that was the biggest swing that caused this positive variance. The district is included in a municipal investment pool called NILAF. They were earning about 4.2%. This is a good time to invest money and build up the reserves utilizing the interest rather than taxpayer earnings. You did have some insurance recoveries, that's included in your sale of property compensation for loss. And then your state aid. Your state aid would be your second largest revenue source. You did anticipate part of your budget process, 6.8 million to come in. You actually only received 6.1, so about almost 700,000 less than budget. This is formula-driven, so I would look at the budgeting year over year. You could see last year you also received about 6 million, so.
Really good, yeah.
You do have a small amount of federal aid, but most of your federal aid is reported in your special aid fund, which we've provided some of the results later. And then another positive variance is in your miscellaneous. So you had 760,000 better than budget on the miscellaneous income. Majority of that is refund of prior year, so if any payables are written off in the current year, that would fall into this line. There was a payable from 2010 related to New York State overpayment for transportation. The school district has been vigilantly following up with that year after year. And the state essentially had, at this point, no information on it. So that was taken in at that point. And then lastly is your transfers in. So your transfers in fell under that other financing sources and uses on the summary page. So the 1,025,000, this is going to be a transfer from the capital project fund from your phase one project. So this didn't get added to unrestricted, it got added to your capital reserve. So I believe that was part of the board resolution that came through in June. So that's the revenue side from a budgetary perspective. On the expenditure side, what we have here is your expenditure summary by function. You have your general government support expenditures, that's going to be your administrative costs, excuse me, and central support services. So any expenses necessary to operate the school district, that would include your business office, building and grounds. It would include legal and the other board of education expenses. You originally budgeted 10.3, that did increase to 11.2 million. But you did have a favorable variance, so you underspent the budget about 917,000. Majority of that was related to the buildings and grounds. So 386,000 was related specific to maintenance. So maintenance that you anticipated spending, but just didn't end up happening this year. About 230,000 was related to operations of your buildings and grounds. That would be your utilities, fuel, oil, that kind of stuff, so that came in under budget. The last portion was related to FOSI services related to the board of education that was not spent this year. The second line is your instruction. Your instruction expenditure, you can see that's your largest expense line. That's going to be your most essential function. Essentially encompasses all activities that directly deals with teaching and learning within the classrooms itself. So you spent about 39.5 million, so 1.9 million under what you budgeted. 631,000 was specific to the regular teaching category. So that would include salary savings, it would include textbooks, material supplies, those items that were budgeted but not yet purchased up to date. Also included in there is 385,000 specific to programs for students with disabilities. Similar items with salaries, textbooks, materials. And then almost 200,000 is related to the computer assistance teaching. That would be equipment and services related to FOSIs for that as well. Your transportation came pretty close to budget at almost 130,000. That would be transportation for students to school and field trips. And then your employee benefit line. Your employee benefit is going to be your second largest expense. So that would be all fringe benefits provided to all district employees regardless of where they're coded. You did have a budgetary savings of 2.5 million. Majority of that is going to be in your hospital medical line. So that would be any premiums that you have to pay for those. It can change and fluctuate based on the rates when they're set versus when they're budgeted. So it's really challenging to budget for employee benefit lines. The last item I wanted to point out was your transfers out. As we talked about, you utilize fund balance, your capital reserve to fund those capital projects. So in that 12.3 is the 3.5 for phase two, the 8.2 for the science labs, and then a small portion that was transferred to your special aid fund for some of your matching grants. So that's how we got to your ending fund balance. If we get on page eight, you can see your reserves here. As I mentioned, you are at 4%, but you do have different categories. You used to have a non-spendable for prepaid, so if you have any prepaid items, that would fall under there. The next bucket of reserves you have is restricted, so that would be legally restricted, third party or like a local law type of a situation. And here you do have reserves related to education laws, your tax surgiory. That would be at 16.9 million, that did increase. We make sure that your tax surgiory is fully supported by what potentially is out there as an exposure aspect. So those are potential claims outstanding. Your employee benefit accrued liability, that's going to be for compensated absences. So as employees retire and they get paid out, this would come, you could utilize this instead of kind of occurring a current year expense. Your ERS and TRS retirement contributions, that would help you pay the invoices that come through as well as the retirement incentives. So you have 2.1 million in your ERS and then 2.2 in your TRS. Your repair reserve would be for any repairs that would come through. So that did increase to 1.3. You have two smaller ones for property loss liability for any claims that come through as well as unemployment benefits. And then your future capital projects. As you anticipated, as we talked about, your capital projects did drop from 11.9 down to 2.3. So you did utilize those two transfers to the capital project for those science lab phase two. But you also had an influx from phase one of what you're adding to this reserve. So overall, your restricted fund balance is at 25.5 million. You do have a sign, so that would be your purchase on orders, those encumbrances we talked about, that's 762,000. So next year when we're back here, I'll talk about what you're planning on using in fund balance. And you'll see that 762,000 will be talked about next year. As well, in your '25, '26 budget, you also anticipated utilizing 2 million of fund balance to balance the budget. So unassigned, 3.4 million almost, so you're at the 4%, which is the limit as required. That's for the general fund piece. You do operate other funds at the school, and that's on page nine. Your special aid fund, again, would house all of your federal and state grants specific to restricted populations. So your revenues would be sourced from federal and state grants. You had revenues of about 5.1 million. You had transfers in that came from the general fund, 118,000, and then expenditures. We do anticipate that this fund would have a zero fund balance as it is fully self-sufficient. All of your revenues are supporting all of the expenditures with that fund. Your capital projects fund, you start out with 25.3 million. You did have some state aid funding, about 500,000. The transfers in that we talked about for those two projects, and then the expenditures, about 19. So those are just funding the ongoing capital projects. Your school lunch fund would just operate your cafeteria. So your revenues would be state, federal aid as well as food sales associated, and then the expenditures related to the cafeteria fund. Your special purpose fund would include mostly your extra classroom. So all of your student activity clubs would flow through there with your revenues being donations or fundraising. And then the expenditure would be funding those field trips or the activities that the student club do.
Are, are equipment expenses for replacing kitchen equipment part of the school lunch fund? Or are they paid for in other ways?
Usually they'd be part of the school lunch, the cafeteria fund, the C fund. But I think somebody had mentioned that we, the district got a grant last year for equipment. That possibly would be paid out of a different fund, separate from food service.
Thank you.
But the maintenance for that would come out of?
C fund. C fund should be self-supporting. The general fund, we hope doesn't have to support it unless it's necessary.
I have a question. The special purpose fund, is there a maximum that that can reach or no?
No, there's no current maximum, like the fund balance would be. Ideally, because of your extra classroom, if we see any clubs that are inactive, we would report that to you. Those should be fully supporting the activities of those clubs. So I would anticipate that it should stay relatively flat. It shouldn't really grow unless they're doing a ton of fundraising.
Say they're doing a ton of fundraising and it goes high and then they don't use it. And then there's doing more fundraising, is that an issue? Like, does that flag something?
I would, I would ask questions about it. Because I think it's important, if you're fundraising, if you're generally for a specific event, something that they, like, whether it's a math club, they have a math, you know, math family they want to go to. So if I see that there's a ton of fundraising and just no money being spent, I would ask why. Most likely I'd have a management comment on it that you're fundraising for a specific thing, it should timely be spent because, you know, as students move on, you want to fundraise for those students who are currently fundraising and supporting those.
Does it also, do classes count in that? So like the class of 2020, well, 2032, for example. They should be accruing funds, right?
Yes.
Every year until 2032. Is that taken into consideration or is that somewhere else?
No, that's going to be in here as well. And then at a certain point when the class graduates, that money would then go to the general student organization to fund and benefit all of the students.
Thank you.
Great question, yeah. You do have a debt service fund, it does have $6 in it, so you could utilize that to help pay for your principal and interest payment, so it could be a big support going forward. And then we do have some debt service that I wanted to provide the summary for. So, you know, in recent years, you did the energy performance contract. So we can see that just started, I think, last year, so this is your, luckily there's no principal or interest payment in the first year. But you can see the principal and interest payment and the payment and maturity schedule right below that, so you will start payments in 2026, so that's your '25, '26 year. So annually about 1.9 million in principal and interest payments. And that would flow through the life through 2040. And then you also have a short-term capital borrowing, that's your bond anticipation note, of about 3.25 million, and that's at 4%. Generally, people would issue bands to fund the project. And then once the project's complete, you would essentially either pay that down entirely or you would roll it into a long-term financial operation fund. So it's a very normal, sensible.
When is, so where does the 3.2 million come from, which, uh, a year?
Yeah. So the 3.2 would be shown in the capital projects fund.
Okay.
And it's going to be part of the liability. So part of your phase two project, I believe, is currently in a deficit, but it's because of being funded through this bond anticipation note. So that would help the cash flow piece of it. So although it's not shown, we focus on revenues and expenditures in here, it's going to be shown on the balance sheet as a liability.
Okay.
So that concludes my presentation for today. Any other additional questions that you have?
So there's our attachments in the, in the agenda.
Yes.
You had this, the summary of the big document that's like hundreds of pages, the mirror. Then there's a management letter that says, basically, everything's okay.
Yes.
And then it says, but, and there are a couple of pages worth of small things that you found.
Yes.
And we were supposed to issue a corrective action plan on that, right? So are you going to discuss that now?
It's on the agenda, further down for vote tonight, yes. So the board was made aware when the agenda was published that the business office did develop a corrective action plan based on the findings and recommendations of the auditors. So if it is a voting item, I, if there are questions regarding the cap, that would be.
I think we should talk about it, because we talked about.
So everybody has a copy at your seat? Can you hand me that one, because I actually don't have a copy.
You need a copy?
The lower one? That's the corrective action, yeah. Oh, do you need one? Do we have another one? Is that an extra there?
One of these has to be printed out here, so keep this back. Can you have one?
Is that a packet next to you?
Yeah, I took that one from there, and we took the one next to it. So everybody has one now?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Do you want me to speak for this, since I?
Uh, sure. Yes, for the corrective actions.
Okay. So the corrective action plan that you're all holding acknowledges the recommendations that the, that the auditor has made. The first one is about capital assets. And basically, the school district has strengthened its capital asset process by working with a company to maintain a comprehensive asset debt database. This is for inventory control, the company is called C-Biz. The historical assets have been successfully captured. However, the current year's activity needed to be adjusted based on the current year's capital outlay. The recommendation was that the school district should review the capital-related expenditures to determine if they should be added to the capital asset schedules. So our corrective action plan is, I reviewed with the business office our current process for inventory control. And one change that we made is originally, they were having the person who was requesting the item to be purchased, that was the person who was tagging it. So we're, we're going to change that to include the head custodian at each building location. So basically, the way the process starts is the facility secretary creates a memo. She currently houses all of the tags. And she'll send the memo with the tag to the head custodian at the location. The head custodian will then tag the item and send the, sign off on the memo that it's been done. They send the memo to the district treasurer. And the district treasurer is the one who is maintaining the asset inventory spreadsheet through C-Biz. And that is where we are tracking all of our inventory. We are starting with clean data because C-Biz is a new company that's come to the district. I believe they were onsite April 24th. And they went around and they took a thorough inventory of everything with the tags. And so they've actually provided a starting point for the district. And now we just have to maintain it.
Ms. Merrill, before, I don't want to go through each one.
Sure.
Just because there's a lot of pages.
Yes.
So for the essence of time, do any trustees have questions on any of them? I don't know if everyone read all of the.
We just got handed it. So my question on this one is, is how big does an asset have to be in order to qualify as capital?
Well, capital, we have two different types of assets. So we do have assets that we do keep inventory on that are not capital. So we are tagging any item that is over $500.
Okay.
And capital, I believe our threshold is?
10,000.
10,000.
So, you know, and I don't want to just make an executive decision. Do trustees want to read through each one? I'm not on the audit committee, so, you know, I may want to hear each one, but what do people feel? Don't all speak at once.
I feel that I have been given the, the changes, right? As recommended by the, by the CPA in my packet. So, I've read everything but the blue text. So, I'm just looking at the blue text.
Okay.
So, just give me a minute.
No rush. Uh, maybe we can go through, let's go through. I'm sorry.
Do you have any special?
I was going to ask too, if the auditor had a chance to review the rec, our corrective action plan and what your opinion is, you know.
Sure, absolutely.
Melissa did attend the audit committee and do a presentation for us. And we actually reviewed the corrective action plan at the audit committee. So, the audit committee did approve it along with, Melissa was part of it, but if you want to speak to anything.
Yeah, sure. I feel like a lot of these responses would satisfy the comments. I think that some of these have, not a lot of them, but like the deficit capital projects, that will be resolved in time. That takes a time, you have to include it in the budget process. So, because twenty-five, twenty-six is already been budgeted, that it's probably going to stay for next year. But it should be included in your twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. So, that will be resolved at that point. But if all of the blue texts are implemented and we do test to make sure that these are resolved each year. So, I think that's important to know. If the blue text is implemented entirely, then we shouldn't have any issues going forward again, except for the timing of the budget process. So, I feel comfortable, I know we, we spoke at length about not only the comments with the audit committee, but how it came about, what the resolution was. We went through the verpage of the, the cap as well. So, I, I felt very comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Could you go over what we're going to do with the student activity funds? How we're going to manage those?
Oh, okay. Sure. Closer to the end, I have a question with before that.
Okay.
So, over expended capital projects. Guess I'm a little confused, not on the, on the audit committee nor the finance committee. So, forgive me if my question is elementary, but I'm looking at our audit report. That was very nicely done. It said that we underspend for the most part on things. But then we have some over expended capital projects. Can you tell us something?
Sure, so some of these over expended projects have, are older projects. The mansion roof emergency, I believe that was related to architect fees, if I remember correctly. You have your district-wide building condition survey, I think that was older. And then the playground general construction, I think that was a couple of years ago. So, what, more recent, but still, still a little bit older. And the twenty-two, twenty-three gym. So, all of these four have been carried over from year to year, unless you. And generally speaking, I know definitely about the eight thousand. The other two are smaller, so I'm not sure what the, what result with that. But the district-wide gym, most likely those were overruns. But I know we also had a comment related to architect fees, just making sure that the budget.
The next question.
The budget includes the projects from start to finish. So, every aspect of the project should be budgeted for, planned for, and included in that, in that project.
Do we have to pay when our architect comes to like the facilities meeting every month? It came to the board?
I think that we definitely pay when we ask, should we do this project? How much it will it cost? And they go to do a bunch of research, did we get billed for that? So, then, if we decide not to go forward with the project, then you have, what? You start a project financially because you've expended money to see if it's viable?
Yeah, it depends on if you have created a capital project. If you're starting the groundwork of like trying to see if you want to move forward with it. And you may not have initially created that capital project in the capital project fund. So, those costs may be assigned to the general fund just as a, an operating cost. But if you created the capital project, you know you're something you're going to want to go through. And there's still architect fees associated with that, you'd want to make sure those are included in the capital project fund budget.
So, but do we pay when we have to come to meetings? They come to like a two, three hour meeting, are we paying them? They're, I don't know if you know that. Do you know?
I think we do.
I think we do.
May I have to confirm?
I don't want to give you work to do, I'm just wondering like how much.
I'm going to assume that we do. So, the other thing that I just want to mention about architect fees is that when you're budgeting for your project, typically you budget six to six and a half percent for architect fees. Again, it's a projection. So, it's difficult to, to budget an exact amount. So, there could always be a variance. When I looked over a lot of the projects, I think that some of the, the, the overage possibly could be from other things other than architect fees. So, I'll just use one for example. I believe the fire hydrant project, there was a lot of unexpected, unanticipated work that came after the budget was set on that project. I believe it had to do with rock and, and different things.
Yes, a factor of three was huge.
Right. So, those types of things, you know, you try to build a contingency in your budget. But sometimes there are unexpected expenses that just come about that you can't control.
And this, um, project length schedule, this is all before you're actually going to. Yeah. Uh, this is concerning. I know there's some controls that were put in recently. But, tell us about this. I actually feel like we're getting things done faster recently in the last few years than we did like ten years ago. But I don't know, maybe it's just my mind, but that's happening. Can you tell us some, some things about that as well?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So, we, the capital project length schedule is also included in the financial statement, so it's by project.
Okay.
Um, most of the time, the project length schedule that we see, at least the one that we get, would have a lot more information on it. Whether it's an SED code, it's a project code, it should reconcile directly to general ledger account codes. It should be very easy to tie up. When we were going through it and kind of the information we were given this year was just the general ledger, so not necessarily a project length schedule per se. So, we worked with the business office on trying to gather that information. And it was just very challenging because those codes were not set up to have specific project, uh, project numbers on them. So, it was very challenging. So, in previous years, the information we got was already separated out for us. So, it wasn't something that we had identified at that point. Knowing that we needed to go through this process of, let's sit down with the facility director and let's go through these projects. What code does this project go to? What vendors do these projects go to? So, we really kind of isolated it out.
So, what was done differently this year, Ms. Vat? You said previously it was already.
So, this year we did, we're receiving project length schedule. So, it wasn't prepared in advance for us. We did access one of our request lists, so we, we did not receive that information. So, generally, we don't receive that, we try to assist the school district and then provide a template. So, here's a template that you can utilize going forward. So, one recommendation too, I think, in the project length schedule is to, right now, I think your projects are broken out, like district-wide projects, phase one, phase two. But there's certain sub-projects within there, like your track and, I forget the other, whether the track is a standard number. So, you'd want to have.
It's very sensitive topic.
Yeah. So, you'd want to have those sub-project listed out because you want to see how each sub-project is performing. So, we had talked as part of the audit committee that you could expand your project length schedule to then show not only the budget overall by, overall project that was approved by each sub-point. So, that way, there's more transparent for the community, for the board. And I think that that would provide a lot more insight. And then we talked with the business office and Shonda has experience in other districts about sending out the code. So, she understood how the code should be set up. And I believe as the codes are being created, it's going to tie out. And then we also provided the business office with a really good template that reconciles to the SED numbers. So, they could kind of utilize that going forward.
I have a quick question. So, last year we had capital projects going on, but you didn't recommend or suggest a template last year. What's the difference between last year and this year?
They got it last year.
Yeah, we were able to receive.
You did have a question?
We were able to receive it. It's not generally in this format, it was more of like a vertical format. So, it was just the way that the previous staff would have prepared it. And this year, when we inquired about it, it wasn't something that was provided. So, in lieu of that, we still have to prepare the schedule, so we wanted to get, get the information.
Okay. We got to, I'm sorry, did you have more question?
It's okay.
And so, extra crack, you haven't reminded me to do.
Oh, I didn't forget, I can't forget about trustee one.
We'll get, we'll get.
Extra classroom activity fund question, please?
Yes. I just asked, okay, so I, I think we continue to have problems with our extra classroom activity funds. And so, the, there's a new solution, right? So, we're going to put the experts in charge, pretty much. Well, tell me about it.
I can tell you about it. Okay, so the one thing that I noticed is that you had a very similar finding the year before as well for extra classroom. And, you know, the bottom line is that the ending bank statement should reconcile to the book balance, which is like your GL book balance. And in the prior year and the twenty-four, twenty-five year, there was a difference in those two. So, when I started looking into how, like our process here and who does what, the one thing that I found is that possibly why those two things were, were off and they weren't reconciling is because we had multiple people doing different duties. And when some, uh, uh, they weren't talking to each other, obviously. So, I looked at streamlining the process. And what we had discussed is to have an extra classroom activity central treasurer, a little bit different than the central treasurer that we currently have now, who actually does very minimal stuff. But this person would be responsible for both reconciling the bank accounts and maintaining the book balance. And then they're provided oversight by the district treasurer, so that there is some controls in place. Currently, our district treasurer is the check signer on the extra classroom activity funds. They don't actually use electronic checks, they use manual checks. So, we do have a separation of duties, so we are still compliant, but we're just cleaning it up a little bit. We, there was one individual who was doing two duties. I think one was referred to as the extra classroom faculty auditor that they were being paid a stipend for. And the other one was the liaison position. So, what we've done is we've kind of taken away the faculty auditor extra classroom and are incorporating those duties into the central treasurer duties. So, there'll be two positions. There will be teacher liaison for the, am I saying that correctly? And the extra classroom activity fund treasurer. So, we're hoping that, that, and we're also going to be providing them with support and training as well.
So, this also encompasses the clubs, the classes, class money. So, the children are also supposed to be doing a large part of that? Is it where the children, the children, the students are informed by the advisor how to do this? And the advisor is informed by you guys?
Right, so the way it should work is the faculty advisor should be mentoring the students. So, you will have a student treasurer. So, the student treasurer, say they were having a fundraising activity, would go around and collect all of the funds. The student treasurer would then bring those funds to the central treasurer. So, you have two people counting the deposits to make sure that the deposits match. The central treasurer should be the one making the deposits. I think previously, they were bringing the money to the district treasurer, am I correct? So, it's actually the central treasurer that should be making the deposits, once she counts it in front of the student treasurer. And the central treasurer though, is the one that is maintaining the bank accounts. They are, they're kind of like the pass-through person for the check request. So, there's a form they fill out. The student would give the form to the treasurer, the treasurer then logs it into the book balance. They give it to the district treasurer and the district treasurer fills out the check.
I just have one final question.
Go ahead.
Since this has been an issue for many years, it's always on here, and I know many districts have an issue with this. Have you guys considered doing a training with the students instead of training the adults and then having it turn?
We're going to be doing a train, yeah. So, we're going to start with doing a training with the faculty advisors and the central treasurer and the teacher liaison. I think we're going to be scheduling that soon. And then from there, we would have the faculty advisors let us know if, if they wanted to provide the training to the students or if they would like us to.
And what we found has, may I? What we found has worked is when you give training, initial training, like for example with the adults, if there's a slide template for them to use, they take that and they turn, key that slide. So, there's a memorialization of like, of what the process is. So, you train them with that slide, that advisor now trains the, the student. And because there is a process that probably wasn't fully functional, we now know that the student treasurer will be coming to the central treasurer. So, that also is a check and balance of the process.
Yeah, the central treasurer, I guess, is a new, new piece of it. But I recall sitting in the Freelo Center, I don't know if y'all remember this meeting, talking to Ms. Vat about it with our, our previous assistant superintendent for business, who said like, I train them, I tell them, but it doesn't always happen. So, that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, this is much more formalized in the posting itself. It communicates that there is a mandatory training. So, they, everyone knows, everyone's aware. And we're also differentiating between those that do fundraise versus those that don't. So, people are clear as well.
Okay, so next year, we can ask again, everything will go straight to the students. Cause I don't know if the students, none of my kids are the treasurers, but I don't know if the students fully have gotten the same, you know, information. And it could just be because the, the advisor is not a financial person, right? To explain it the same way, I don't know.
Okay. Do you want to ask more?
No, well, the only other thing, you know, probably asked others before, going back to general fund and the capital projects. So, within the general fund, we also account for capital projects. There's like no separate capital projects. Like activity, you know what I'm trying to say? Like all of that stuff is just buried in the general fund. So, any transaction really related to maybe BBS and OAS, that all comes out of the general fund. That's where we would see those separate transactions.
No, it should come out of the capital fund.
Or it's a, an established project.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to figure out how everything got culminated like that. If things were going in general fund, if it's dedicated to a capital project, why wouldn't it be like on the capital project side of whatever we got going on? If all that makes sense.
Yes, yes. There is a capital projects fund. So, as capital projects are established, approved and funded, then they would, the money would then go into the capital projects fund from the general fund. For example, we saw the transfer out for the capital reserve into the capital projects fund. And then all of the capital project related costs would flow through the capital projects fund. In relation to the code, the coding in the general ledger, that would all be within the H-fund, so all the capital project fund. Generally, the end of the account string should have the, either the SED code or like a project identifier. So, you might, so you might have like multiple construction manager codes, but if each one is specific to the project that you have approved. Right now, I think there's only maybe a couple of them and there might be, have multiple projects within them. So, it makes it a little bit challenging to go through it and, and identify, whereas having something really clear cut and then being able to reconcile. So, we also talked about putting those project codes or SED codes on the project length schedule, so it's clearly identifiable as well.
Okay, again, I was just trying to figure out how things got, again, culminated with general fund. How was Shonda for being conceited from that aspect of it?
Okay, sounds good.
Any more questions, trustees? Trustee Sampaio, Jacobson? Guys quiet? I just, because we're not on the audit committee, so trustee Mandalong and Valen, you know, met for hours with these guys. So, I want to give everyone else a chance to ask any questions you have before we vote this evening. So I want to give everyone else a chance to ask any questions you have before we vote this evening. Okay. Thank you, Visat.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, mercy. See, I like seeing, I don't know why the business office, then you come with a bunch of questions.
Thank you, have a great afternoon.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Okay. So trustees, we're gonna pivot back to our policy review, and I'm gonna turn the meeting over to my vice president, Valen, for this portion of the meeting.
Okay, so we have a number of policies that have been reviewed by our admin team and legal advisors. Sorry, I've got my notes here. I'm gonna skip down to the new one first. Let's look at fifty-six eighty-five. Maximum temperature for school buildings and indoor facilities. Again, this is a new policy uh, in response to law, legal change in New York State. Now is the time for the board to comment, question anything on these policies. They will be put, to present to the public at the work session later this month, and be left open for a month for comment, and then be put up for approval at the November regular meeting, so.
I do have a comment. I believe I sent many emails about this.
Sure, yes you did.
So trustee Nalan, you said that this is consequences in our state?
The law changed this year, yes.
It did, it did.
What was it before, trustee Carrie's?
I don't think there was any maximum.
Just suffer. Right, the excessive heat, um, especially in the spring. It had their.
There was a minimum, there was a minimum.
There was a, a minimum.
Oh, wow, okay, so this.
When it got home, it was, it got to a certain time. That's what I'm saying.
But I see that they implemented that, and I guess this has a response to climate change, right? These crazy temperatures that we've been getting and that.
Okay. Trustee Jacobson?
Um, I guess this would be more of a procedure versus a policy, but since we have so many schools of varying structures, ages, all of that stuff, do we need anything in here to reflect if like one school, like for instance, if Woodland exceeded the heat and we have the idea of bringing students to other buildings or other parts of the building? Like, how would that work? Or is that more procedural?
I can say that that's procedural, but the policy is broad enough where that option is open to administration to move students whether within a building, because it can have hotspots within a building or to other buildings.
Right, right. And so, and that was actually, I know even before I started, because some districts were closed down because they don't have air conditioning or those types of facilities to cool the space. That was not something fortunately that Greenberg had to do to go to half-days. So I think, you know, right, but that was one of my questions, you know, before starting. So um, I think those are things that we will work out building by building based on the case scenario.
And then the follow-up is how are we communicating that to families if their students are, if this building needs to go half-day, or the students are moving, how are we communicating that out to families?
We haven't even had that conversation at this point, because we haven't had to, to do that. But that's something we think about and consider from procedures.
I can just interject, but we do have emergency communication processes in place. Hopefully, there will be a test of those happening during the next month. Reminder, reminder.
And it goes on, make sure to download the app perhaps.
Situations happen, like even for example, there was a lockdown drill today, right? Working with the principal, made sure that that went to communicate to parents, especially before it gets home from students. And, you know, we don't want anything this.
I'm just thinking like if something was needing to occur from a different building that would change, because it's a home, and that, like, it would have a report act if we.
That would be a different type of building. As opposed to moving students from one end of the building to another. And something like weather is something you can see out too. So you know, if it's getting to a certain level, you have to start having those conversations, right? Thankfully, we don't have like.
Well.
We have. Thankfully, we don't have like, you know, those random like tornadoes and flash flood, even though, you know, we. Okay, not, not common, not common, okay.
Can I just ask a very maybe basic question? What's being used to measure the room temperature?
We have thermostats now that measure individually each room. Right, that's part of our energy performance contract.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
So where are they in here? Did I have spot on here?
Yeah, because I, when I sent my emails, I was told there were certain temperatures, and then they pointed a gun at the wall, which was obviously.
So that, if I can return the policy, the policy does determine how to measure the temperature, which basically says X feet away from plane X in the center of the room, blah, blah, blah. Perhaps that's an operational question that we could ask at a facilities committee meeting on how they plan to do that forward or when they're gonna put the plan in place. That's just a recommendation.
No thermostat in the middle of the room.
That's my, right.
They can centrally look at, at what the temperatures are based on their electronic monitoring of the individual thermostats.
But we know that we're running excessive heat ti- that time of year, watching for that too with the news. And then we're, we're setting, you know, making ourselves to pay attention to those two things too, especially at that time. But planning is important, yes, yes, yes. You are a planner. I try to be. So trustee Nalan, what's next?
Um, no, it's um, sorry.
You're not done with this one?
No, okay. This says, just to further through things. This says under item B in the first paragraph, room temperature means the temperature measured in a shaded location, three feet above the floor near the center of the room. So that's the, that's the section of the policy I'm referencing. If the sensors within the room are set to measure at that point, wonderful, great, good. Otherwise, maybe it's a question as to whether they're gonna look into getting a sensor, a portable sensor.
And say, oh, it looks bad on the, on the screen, go check the room.
I, I just know that there are rooms that have pockets of heat.
There's sockets of room that are.
And the same exact time, so whatever, I mean, it's ever gonna be perfect. But as far as, I think I hear no comments really on changing the policy itself.
No, no.
We're all talking about operations, so I will move this forward after I say one other thing. I do need to point out that I believe my interpretation of the policy is it refers to activities within school buildings and other indoor school facilities. This does not necessarily apply to things like outdoor graduations. So I just need to state that out loud, or athletics, okay?
But then you know, there's no mandatory state to include that, correct?
Not according to the law, I believe, or the policy developed based on the law. So I just wanna clarify that if anyone has questions.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to, I'm gonna get a little bit, to seventy-four seventy, which is a new policy on student government. Basically, just acknowledging that student government organizations will exist within the district and, um, that they will serve as liaison between the student body and school administration. Any questions, comments on this policy?
Yeah, why do we need this?
I don't know, I was wondering why. I mean, I see it does reference ed law, so I don't know if that's why.
But can this be a, a, uh, embedded in another policy? I mean, are we just making policies to make additional policies?
That was my initial reaction as well, but.
Someone broke it out.
Erie Wombosis, which is our service provider.
Do, do you think maybe that happened with the, um, almost like the requiring of ex-official members and started stuff?
That's embedded under a different policy.
Okay, so that's not why this was separate.
But there is no real policy, because I did look at this earlier, because I had the same question, President Mares. I tried to see if it would be included under the policies under like civic engagement or basically social studies, but you can't find it right now, and I didn't see it really included specifically. It does reference in education law. I don't know if that's why they created the policy for it. It's an optional policy. It's not a required policy, so we could, we could decide just not to add it, I suppose.
So it says the district will establish guidelines and procedures for the operation of the student government. So does that mean?
Is that something we want to do?
Don't we already have that? Probably.
There's gotta be some way.
It's im-, or it might be implicit. Maybe everybody just does it the same way, because they've always done it, and there's no written policy.
That's true, no point.
So, um, what we're looking at here is the NICE ed gov standards, um, as it relates to this section. And what it says is it requires every school district serving high school students in grades nine and twelve, but no district-wide or school building peer-selected student group to establish at least one. We do have that already. So I don't know if it's, um, something that we need to have, even though, because we already have student-established civic groups. Or, or could we add it to another policy? Because there's some policies that have multiple.
I did try to look for some where it could be, I couldn't find any. I'm not saying there isn't one we could add to. I found a quick look, I couldn't find where it would be logically added. I'm not saying.
We just hate to create additional stuff just for.
Is it the idea that maybe there are districts that don't want to, and so this is a way to start pushing? Because like, let's say thirteen years from now, they're like, we don't want student government anymore. It's a way to be like, no, we have to, and we say we're going to, to kind of reinforce that idea. But we're, like, and a lot of these policies, we've been ahead of what Wombosis says or what the state says. We've already been doing a lot of these things, and maybe this is just another example that we're already doing it, but other districts needed push.
And instructionally, a portion of this is already embedded in our social studies framework too. When you think about the seal of civic readiness and those components for New York State too. Okay.
Did someone read education law eight seventeen?
I did not, I just.
That's what I just read.
Surprisingly.
But do you, do you, the first part of the required.
When you think I'm randomly on my phone, I'm never. Um, it just says that the law was added in two thousand twenty-three to require schools to establish peer-selected student governments for high school students starting in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So that's probably why they put this in.
Yeah, so it's like you said.
Reminder, people didn't want to do it.
Right.
But, but we have it, but we don't have a policy that says we have to have it. So next year, we could decide we don't want, we don't have a policy.
But we could, I mean, our policies are not requi-, all of them are not required. So we always could, we could put, do a policy today, and then in three months, say, discuss it, take a vote, and then undo the policy, so I don't know.
But I'll state that even if we didn't have a policy, we would still have to follow ed law. So sometimes policies are a nice reminder of what ed law requires. So even though I don't like adding policies just to add them because it's cumbersome, uh, I like it just for the reminder for people who don't like reading ed law.
The gunpowder, they already know how to feel about it. I, I think, you know, why do we have so many of these things? People are not gonna read until there's a problem. Why not simplify them and make them, you know, digestible? That's all. So to me, creating another layer when you can embed it in something else, um, makes sense, but, uh, we'll keep going.
Okay, I'm gonna go to seventy-five thirty, child abuse and maltreatment. I'm, this is an existing policy. There's just one line that's been added on page three of seven. Any comments, questions, trustee N?
Oh, yeah, there is, but maybe I'll let you, yeah, maybe I'll let you highlight what was added, and then I'll ask.
On page.
Use your corporate function.
Page three of seven, what was added to the definition of child abuse was using corporal punishment as defined by the commissioner of education.
So if you are conducting online instruction and you see in the background of, of the child sitting there in the foreground, and there's another child in the background who reaches for a hot stove, and an adult comes and slaps him in the hand, then you have to report it?
No.
No, it says defined by the commissioner of education. Yes, trustee Jacobson?
So I, I will.
You don't have to report.
Correct, that is on child abuse.
It depends on what's defined by the commissioner of education. So do, do we need to have that definition here?
Well, this is also, this is also in the school setting. So this is child abuse in the school setting.
So is the school setting, the physical school setting, or is it a unique place that you have a school, uh, activity?
Yeah, it means by an employee. So an employee uses corporal punishment.
Not.
Got it, the parent.
Not a parent.
And I think there's a little delineation between child abuse versus corporal punishment too, right?
So I, I have not read through this whole policy, but in my clinical life, there have been significant updates to what is considered child abuse. What is a reportable incident as a mandated reporter, and a lot of those policies and stipulations have been altered, and they've just been altered again.
Yeah.
Um, from April.
From last year.
Yeah, there was a mandatory training that everyone had to take by April, and now there's another one you have to take by November. Um, so I haven't taken that one yet, but does, are, are we reflecting on not just ed law, but also what is required of mandated reporters?
No, they're gonna be delayed.
This is, this is for twenty-twenty-three, this update, so it is not reflected in the last two twenty-three.
Correct, and most of what.
It did, if you look at the very end, it does reflect more than ed law. It says family court act, labor law, et cetera, et cetera.
So the, the big, the big changes.
Well, the most recent one is for just intellectual development.
Yeah, so it was, it was broadening the idea to consider any disabilities, cultural implications, it, it, and things that you don't have to report. Like it changed a lot of the rules of what is considered the responsibility of a mandated reporter. And so obviously, I hope they don't keep revising it like every six months. But in that sense, if we're going to be revising it, I think we should at least get it up to speed to what it is now.
But we haven't received our legal guidance, either from Erie Wombosis or, or, um, legal services. So I'm not saying no, I'm saying I would like, I see that.
Oh, sorry.
So is there harm, we've updated multiple policies multiple times. Is there harm in moving forward with this while we investigate trying to pull those changes sooner, rather than just waiting for Erie One, maybe reaching out to Erie One Wombosis to see if they have additional changes pending? Or reaching out to our, uh, legal advisors?
Or maybe even have ref- referencing, adding a reference note to whatever the current policy is.
OCFS, yeah.
Yeah, so that it is at least like there is another reference point to what is the most updated.
I just think it's gonna be delayed. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I hear you, but.
Well, it is, it is, but it, it takes a lot, the new version takes more burden off of a mandated reporter. And I think especially when you have every employee being a mandated reporter, giving better guidance is helpful.
Can I, can I, can I, can I argue that? I agree with you, but I think the policy's just gonna be delayed, just what, is what it is. But maybe operationally, if you guys can try to have the more updated information as you do your, you guys do the staff training on child abuse and mandated reports. At least if that's updated, they can follow that, but the policy's just gonna take, I mean, if it's twenty, twenty-twenty-three, and we're just now.
Meanwhile, we can ask our lawyers to look into it, because it also might be that even though certain things have changed in the OCFS, maybe in ed law, they're remaining stricter. We don't know, right? Because it's a little, we're, here, we're supposed to be covering, following all of those things. So I don't want to just take a, like a thing, but let's just try to, let's find the reference. If you could put that on the to-do list, and trustee N?
I have a higher level question. Uh, we said that this applies to, in the school setting. However, the very, the second line in the policy says child abuse in domestic settings.
What page?
The first, page one, second line. And page two, all the way at the bottom, it starts the child abuse in educational setting, and it goes into definitions. So is this a policy about domestic, or is it about school?
Both.
I think it's both, but delineates.
Right.
I was just referencing the section.
That law.
Because that specified acts committed in an educational setting by an employer or volunteer.
So we have to.
So that's where Ms. Mottick was referencing in the educational setting, not the policy as a whole.
I'd like to make a recommendation too, now that I'm looking at this, because while we're under the definition section, corporal punishment, maybe providing the definition for that in this section. And then, um, when I'm looking under student support services for NICE ed, that section is aid of the New York Commissioner's Reg nineteen point five.
Right, where, where is that? Look, look, right here.
Yep, which we need to reference, um, at the end of this.
You said NICE ed?
Um, yeah, it's, um, it's, um, regulations eight, New York C R R nineteen point five. And that's also where they find the definition of corporal punishment. Okay, so.
I have one more question.
Yes.
If, if we include the actual. If, if we include the actual definition in the policy, which we, I was gonna say they changed the definition. We, we have to somehow stay on top of changing our policy every single time. Uh, the advantage to referencing it as this way, it's, we don't, our policy doesn't have to be a move, adjust for moving targets.
So could we split the difference, and instead of writing out the definition in the policy, reference the section of.
Where he has the permission.
I, Richard's regulation.
Just so that people, because then we'll have the question. Somebody's left, so we just want to make sure.
So aid NYCRR part nineteen point five. Nineteen point five.
Okay.
Hold on.
Listen.
Well, we also need to.
You know, like, I'll just go here. Um, real quick, so I've read this, and we talk about mandated reporters, that should be everyone. But I feel like in here, it's just referenced school people that have certificates and licenses and blah blah. Someone like a Newnate doesn't have a certificate or license. So how do we ensure they're following policy if it's not compliant?
So typically, and in the training that is done, we talk about that someone such as a Newnate has an obligation to report to their immediate supervisor. So typically, it's the principal that will make the phone call. Really, the principal makes the phone call almost in all situations, or it might be escalated higher up. But it's not typically the provider, the teacher typically.
Or sometimes, I'll be honest.
Together, or it'll be together.
It could be together, but sometimes it's the social worker, the school council. We'll do it in collaboration with the administrator.
It's usually a collaborative effort. But the Newnate should know that if they see something, that they do report it immediately to their immediate supervisor.
But I also want to clarify, too, the expectation is any adult working in a school building with any student or child is expected to still, you know, hands off, like all of those things. That's still the expectation.
So does that need to be defined in here, or we're okay with leaving that out? Because I don't see anything like that in here, so I'm just wondering.
And I think that was your question.
Yeah.
Please.
I don't know where to put on this.
Well, there's a section about the bus driver, and there's something, it can be added.
Because it should be.
Yeah, but the bus driver only because they're contracted with the district, so there's something in here about contractors. So it doesn't, like I said, specifically define each role.
I'm agreeing. I'm saying it can be put around that area.
It could be.
Or it could be an introduction section about what the district stance, the board and the district stance is around child abuse and maltreatment. And then you go into the section on child abuse in domestic settings and stuff like that. So the district maintains the expectation that.
I'm fine, go ahead.
We're, we're at the second. Policy.
I know, it's not the policy committee right now.
Those are the dangers of this.
Well, we must talk about it.
We should talk about.
We will have some reviews.
We should, we should talk about it, but it's already seven forty-five, and we haven't gotten to the board discussion on Ms. Bud, nor have we got to executive session yet.
Well, Ms. Bud's even worse, so you might as well say we're not being here to midnight, because what is that?
I'm gonna move on to the next one.
We're not being here to midnight.
Okay, so I'm gonna look at.
We have to prioritize. People don't want to be here late.
Sitting and waiting. I want to look at seventy-one sixty remote instruction in conjunction with seventy-two twenty-four virtual instruction. The new policy is seventy-two twenty-four virtual instruction. Ms. Pineda, I, we need to add a cross-reference to seventy-one sixty, please, at a minimum, at the bottom. On seventy-one sixty, I want to add a cross-reference to seventy-two twenty-four. And I'm including in here, not just to add the cross-references, there are no changes to seventy-one sixty remote instruction, except for the cross-reference I'm asking to add. But I did want to include them both here, so that the board could see that the definitions are slightly different, and that's why there are two policies, even though at first blush, it looks like the same thing repeated. Are there any comments, questions, suggestions from trustees?
No, and trustees, you will have these for thirty days. So it's not like we can't ask more questions in another meeting as well, after you read it. Preferably not on a Tuesday, sending all of them. Okay.
Okay. The last one.
You weren't the only one.
I'll keep waiting.
Go ahead.
The last three we're gonna look at are seventy-three ten, student conduct and discipline. And you'll see two thirty-four tens listed in your packet. The short version on page two is from two thousand twelve, that's our current version. And the new version, the proposed version, is the first page dated two thousand twenty-five. My proposal is that we get rid of seventy-three ten and our old thirty-four ten, and replace it with thirty-four ten, the code of conduct. Code of Conduct, this is not the code of conduct, it's the policy on how we create and inform people about the code of conduct. The information on our current public code of conduct, thirty-four ten, is basically a preamble in stating beliefs. The current seventy-three ten, uh, goes a little bit more into student discipline. But all of that would be spelled out in the code of conduct.
I would.
So, so any comments, questions, suggestions?
I would, I would like some sort of sentence on the top. I don't know if the lawyer should write it, or the superintendent, or a conjunction, that says the behavior is expected for students, for faculty, and for parents, visitors, whatever. Because that, that doesn't always come across.
So the first, the second sentence in the paragraph, in the first paragraph says, the code will govern the conduct of students, teachers, and other school personnel, as well as visitors and vendors.
But maybe can we take that out? The code here.
I'll see it right there.
Okay, is there a way to highlight that? For some reason, people don't seem to think codes of conduct apply to adults, or they don't think it applies to employees.
Well, we have to then go to the code of conduct that we have and do things to it to say what factors, you know, what we expect from different people, different actors, in the code of conduct.
Is there another thing? Um, any other trustee? Okay, what about, does anyone have a just, just disagree with my proposal to get rid of the other two and replace it with this? If I incorporate any of that as a preamble? Okay. All right, great. Turn the meeting back over to you, for starters.
Okay, next we have reports. Ex officio student report is not here. Or present report, I am gonna table, because you just heard from me last week. Uh, superintendent of schools report?
Just a couple of, of quick things, um, because you just heard from me last week, too. Uh, Greenberg, I just want to share that we participated in the New York State Department of Labor Job Fair today, um, at the Westchester County Center. Most of the potential candidates, while it was an instructionally focused, um, were provided information about substitute teaching positions, as well as other civil service potential, uh, potential positions in the district. Um, but I just want to share, as we onboard our Human Resource Executive Director, that we're gonna really be amplifying our recruitment efforts for various teacher recruitment fairs, um, in the spring, as we may mostly held. Just a reminder that we are seeking public con- uh, public comment for the code of conduct, as well as the district-wide safety plan. Just want to put that out there for our community. Today is Greenberg Central School District's School Safety Personnel Day, so I want to thank all of our safety personnel, uh, across the district, um, that work hard every day and greet students in the morning, at the, getting off the buses and into buildings, all of those things. So thank you to our school safety teams. Um, I also want to acknowledge and recognize National Principals Month, so I wanted to publicly acknowledge our principals, Principal Washington, Principal Simone, Principal Mascherangelo, Principal Rossi, and Principal Smith. So thank you to our building leadership, um, who work hard every day and have really done our buildings off today. Sure, okay. So I also want to share that next week, Tuesday, at five P M, October fourteenth, we will be doing our ribbon cutting for the new tennis courts. We are really excited about that, so we want to invite the public, the community, the school community, everyone, to come on out and see our new tennis facilities. And so we welcome everyone to Z, October fourteenth at five P M.
So this is a really big deal. Is there gonna be seating and a ribbon cutting? Is it gonna be just everyone kind of need to stand around? I don't know if you know all those details, there's also some sort of game.
Yes, there'll be a match.
Um, so we get a lot of information. I don't know who's able to come or not, um, to it.
We do have information to put out. We were just waiting to make sure we were good, and so that'll be forthcoming tonight. I'll just. Post strings on that one.
And definitely, trustee Warner would probably want to blast the Facilities Committee, because that's where this tennis court idea situation was actually brought up and pushed. The tennis courts have been a mess for many, many years here, um, unfortunately, and neglected and ignored in other projects more important. And so it did come up in the Facilities Committee, and that was pushed from that level. So I do think, um, while I guess some people are informed already, I do think the committee, I don't know if you want to draft an email to your booth and let them know.
Yeah.
I'll call.
Is that it?
That is it, that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, any questions, comments? So we'll keep going.
I, you don't even give anyone a chance to take.
For, for, for Dr. Chisholm, do you have any questions and comments? Okay, trustee man's, go ahead.
Thank you. My mom asked where homecoming was on today, she had to be, now the location?
Oh, I wanted to tell you guys. We have some ideas. I want to run it by the board before I do a public announcement. But we do have a, a great idea and a great opportunity that I hope the board will support.
Okay, I'll let her know, thank you.
And then after we talk about it.
Then I'll, then I'll maybe, you know, come back at the end and share.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to you, president man.
That was it?
That was all you.
Yes. Okay, next we have committee reports. Is there a report from the Audit Committee?
Uh, we, no, because we have the presentation tonight, and all our recommendations are on here for voting. Okay, C E C Committee?
Yes. The Community Engagement Committee met on nine twenty-two, twenty-five at five P M in Lee F. Jackson Cafeteria. We asked for volunteers for membership with the committee. We discussed existing charges, deciding they needed to be revisioned, and agreed to do some work via email before the next meeting. Our guest representatives were the P T A units, they reported on their activities so far and their plans for the immediate future. Lee F. Jackson talked about their meet and greet event with the Fire and Police Department in attendance. Their membership connections with alumni recruiting teachers, and their upcoming Read-a-thon and trunk-or-treat event, which is ten seventeen, uh, six to eight P M, if you want to bring your kids to trunk-or-treat. High View's report center on the school store and the Read-a-thon. R J. Bailey had their staff appreciation breakfast, their ten-eight walk and roll to school day, which is coming up, and the Scholastic book sale in December. Woodlands had a dedicated group of students who volunteered for the elementary schools, a student advocacy group, teacher membership efforts, and a December book fair. The P T A Council helps train the units and allows them to speak with the United Voice in advocating for our district. The superintendent shared her recent hires, including Assistant Superintendent for Business Sean Nemero, uh, P B S Director Audrey Tavell, and her upcoming appointment for Human Resources that hadn't happened yet, but we now know is Kevin Hanrady. We discuss these as possible guest speakers later in the year. Finally, we looked at a slideshow of mixed events and facilities issues, the convocation, the first day of school, fathers bringing their children to school, seniors' sunrise, the L F. Jackson meet and greet, and the superintendent with the Falcons, you know, soar logo. We showed the completed High View windows, the Woodlands' security vestibule progress on the turf field, and more parents of traffic problems from the water main project. The next meeting of the Community Engagement Committee is ten twenty-three, twenty-five at seven P M. This is Thursday at High View, all are welcome.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments?
Oh, sorry.
Hearing none, we'll go to the education.
Not this Thursday.
Go to the Education Committee?
Uh, our, our, our first Education Committee meeting is Thursday, October thirtieth at seven P M here in the Woodlands Middle High School Education Innovation Lab. We will be looking at, generally speaking, some, um, some of our test scores, and where we're starting out, how we ended last year, how we're starting out this year, and we hope to look at least, at least two policies.
Right here.
Finance Committee? One second.
Oh, two questions, comments?
Thank you so much. From those who may not be able to be in attendance for Education Committee and have questions or concerns, can we submit them for you guys to discuss?
I don't see why not.
Thank you. That's all need to know. Since we're talking about test scores and everything, that should top it, right? Okay.
Yes.
And they're going to be I ready in New York State or both?
I think it'll be a deep dive on data we've already seen, if I'm not mistaken. We have our planning meeting next week, so. So if you want to submit the questions by next week, that would be ideal.
Gotcha.
Trustees, and just a reminder to the trustees, it is a committee of the whole, so if you are looking, and would like to, you're open. Finance Committee, our next meeting is Friday, October seventeenth at one P M, I believe, in the Freelo Center at Woodlands Middle High School. Um, I think we're gonna be looking at the reserve funds, the reserve fund report that the board receives.
Facility, any questions, comments? Facilities Committee?
The Facilities Committee met on nine eleven twenty-five at six thirty P M at the Woodlands Innovation Lab via Zoom. Uh, we confirmed our membership, reviewed our charges, and reviewed the status of our major construction projects. The security vestibule is done, the water main project is ongoing, it should be done in January, the four tennis courts were on track and have since opened. There's a new area, uh, one court where water pools, it needs to be fixed. Uh, the roof replacement at Woodlands was delayed by flashing supply issues, but now it's almost done, there are guys working out there. The High View East wing windows are done, the energy performance contract is on track for completion in January. A community member is trying to find a cost-effective way of enclosing the battery energy storage system in concrete, and Con Ed is installing a gas pipe on Piedmont to connect to the high school. The science lab renovation plan will just be discussed at the next meeting. The roof replacements at High View and Jackson will be, will go to bed in October, I guess now. Uh, the football turf field replacement and track projects were delayed over the summer. The turf is near completion, but the track is dependent on weather and may be delayed until spring. Uh, members were concerned and requested a breakdown of the events leading up to the delay. The next meeting of the Facilities Committee is Thursday, ten, nine, six, at six thirty P M in the Woodlands Innovation Lab. That one's this Thursday.
Any questions, comments? Office of the committee? Hearing none, we're gonna go on to Governance and Policy Committee.
I don't have formal minutes written up, so I'm just gonna do a couple bullet points. Um, there was discussion outside of various governance items. We are recommending that the board evaluations, as well as our public survey, will be added to board docs once we create a new subsection. That is the recommendation to the full board. I guess we should ask if the full board agrees.
Does anybody have any concerns about first?
Sounds like a good idea.
No, okay. Trust, trustees, Sepulio, Vance, or Jacobson?
Can you say that again?
So the evaluation, the, the big evaluation, and with just without any comments, our legal would have to see and agree with it first. Um, but pretty much just the end score is.
The summary calculation would be public, the, the rest of it would be non-public.
I'm all for transparency and accountability.
And then the public surveys, again, the, the graphic detail from the public surveys will be, um, put there, and that can be referenced from here to here.
What public survey?
The survey.
The board one we did.
The survey.
The one we sent out, the parent family survey.
The parent survey.
Oh, one of her board, I thought it was.
That will be put on board docs.
That, yes, however, the word survey made me think, I didn't see a survey come out in regard to the board, but it's the other survey.
Right, it's a palette.
I got you.
Sorry, I'm.
The one that had like twenty questions.
It was under the subject of information sharing, so it sounds like it's all together. Okay, I'm gonna hold on before she starts telling it me. The last thing is a special reminder to everybody that we all agreed in the summer, that January twenty-fourth is a retreat day, a full-day retreat, reminding everyone.
One, two, four, two, six.
Starting the preliminary planning.
Yeah, childcare.
On my calendar.
Husband care.
That's it for me.
Wife care.
We do not know when the next meeting will be.
That is a Sa- Saturday.
Yep.
It is. Holidays, it's after Monty's King Day, but before Valentine's Day.
I have answers.
Five on my calendars.
Nobody's got it.
All day, yes.
I don't remember what you said.
There may be.
There might be a problem.
Oh, no.
But I don't know yet. That's, and I won't know till it gets closer, so I'll tell you.
All right, let's keep going. Wellness Committee?
Uh, we met on the September twenty-sixth in the Freelo Center. We elected co-chairs, which is myself and Martina Omeili. Uh, we decided. We decided to rename the food survey to help with confusion around it being a survey versus a continuous feedback. And so we're calling it a thousand food feedback forum. So we're going to talk tactic at that change and to make it its own button on the website so people realize that that is something that they continuously go back to. So we're going to collect feedback on an ongoing basis and also looking into a more like in the moment feedback in the buildings and talk to witnesses to see what would actually, what feedback could be most valuable ultimately. Ms. Mads been making the rounds in all the cafeterias to check out procedures and staffing needs and stuff like that. So you might see her and you say hi. Would you see her in the cafeteria? We discussed making some, something that looked like either a menu committee or making a scene if a parent university would be helpful to help families understand the regulations that, that influence the ingredients we can use and stuff like that. And maybe witnesses can do a tasting and get feedback directly from families. And so finding ways to link the community and families with the wellness committee and nutrition in general and just other ways to bridge some of the other work that's happening in phys ed and SCL and the community partners that we have. There's a calming room being developed at Woodlands through Title I funding, which is very exciting. And we've also kind of looked around about ways we can help the family engagement, potentially looking into bringing back wellness Wednesdays in a way that helps reinforce the wellness committee's work. There was talk of sharing closets, community partnerships, and wellness grants that can help with nutrition and food services. And our next meeting is October twenty-fourth from twelve thirty to two thirty.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Yes.
Just the Falcon, just so you don't ever use an acronym, because I'm thinking three absolute school settings, probably not.
That's true. We will always spell it out. But good call.
Any other questions, comments? I just want to say I was happy to see that our administration addressed some of the issues at ECP with the kitchen. That makes me so happy.
It's coming along though, too.
And just acknowledged that it was an issue in the first place. And then I also wanted to ask more about the calming room. I don't know trustee Semmelier and Mads, you were here later, but if you guys remember the wrap room.
I used to go to the wrap.
So the wrap rooms.
It sounds like it's supposed to be reminiscent of that.
Right. And the fact that they found Title I dollars to cover is really great. I mean, for the moment, I got on the board, I brought it up, I don't know how many times. But it was such a memorable thing for everyone who went there. Was it still there when you were there?
I don't remember.
The wrap room? Um, yes. So it was for newer administration. It was a room that was run, I think, back then by a psychologist.
He was.
And it literally was a drop-in room. I don't know how they did it. I was a kid, but they managed it. I'm sure kids tried to use it to avoid class, but it wasn't a problem, obviously. Every kid that came through here knew about it. It was a place that was safe, no matter if you were like an athlete or a non-athlete or a social kid or a non-social kid, you could drop in and get some support for a period or a half a period or a couple of minutes or the day. You just could not deal. You could go to the wrap room. And there was a prior trustee who also used to talk about it because she went here and she remembered that as well. So, you know, hopefully someone on the committee talks about that.
Yeah. So Kimberly Johnson is the one that was talking about, and she used to be her editor.
She wrote about it.
So she's creating it and developing it. And then we were discussing like potentially, especially with grants, if there's other money that can be solicited to help develop it and make it as good as it can be.
It was on the second.
And we hope to hear back from her too about like what are the procedures around how it will be used and how it will be monitored and, you know, supported in that way.
I just want to add to that. Sometimes I, just a little caveat, especially when we're doing rooms like that and we're, it might be a student with disability. So just keeping in mind that sometimes when we utilize space, not that it's not okay, but depending on how long or the duration and stuff like that, it could be considered a change of placement. So I just want to make sure that we're very cognizant about what it looks like if we're allowing students with disabilities to also be in that space and then tracking those that time too.
Yeah. I have no idea how the adults did it back then.
You can't. There is a law now that you can't have these separate timeout rooms. But it's not of that purpose, so you just need to be, when you are developing it, be very, very careful.
So it would be considered a timeout room if the kid brought themselves there to calm down or to?
If they were delivered there.
If they were delivered there, you'd know. It wasn't like a teacher would tell you, go to the wrap room. You would put yourself in the wrap room. Like they call them wellness rooms now at jobs. They have a wellness room.
I've developed calming rooms and they're not punitive. They are meant to be self, it's like self.
Regulated.
Regulated, but also like you ask to go. Like you recognize the calming features of that space and you request to go so that you can regulate and then return to school.
It's in its initial phase.
Yeah.
So it was generated through the work from the consultations, the voices of the students, the teachers, et cetera. So right now the monies have been set aside. That's all that has been.
Plenty of jobs now, I don't know about educational institutions, but plenty of jobs do have wellness rooms. You know, if you're having a hard day, you had enough at work, you need a break, go take a break. You know, music's nice, the lighting is nice. Yes. We will move on. Thank you. Is there anything else for the wellness committee? Questions, comments? No. Safety committee?
Safety committee.
Next meeting.
October twenty-fourth from twelve thirty to two thirty in the Free Low Center. I assume the Free Low Center, here.
Thank you. Sorry.
Oh, where?
Sorry.
It's all good. Safety committee, our first meeting is coming up Monday, October twenty-seventh. Everyone should have gotten an email. If you didn't, someone will probably forward it to you. I think it's going to be great, 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 great. And there you go. Oh, what time? At six thirty. Six thirty in the Innovation Lab right here at Woodlands Middle High School.
All are welcome.
All are welcome. The more than every other.
To take from trustee Warner.
Everybody.
Is it seven thirty? I'm sorry.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty. I know, I know. We're gonna, I'm telling myself six. Don't worry.
And next we have, last but definitely not least, our technology committee.
We met on September eighteen. Dr. Chisim joined us as well. I am the chair again. And we reviewed the process of getting the Chromebooks back from graduating and seniors and what worked and didn't work for next time. We have a much better success rate for families signing the acceptable use policy, in part because of the way it was rolled out this year. Just as a reminder, that's what you sign. You say you take accountability for your student's Chromebook and that is what also gives them the ability to log on to the district's Google site, wifi, everything tech-related. That is saying that you understand that it is the district's property and that you are bargaining it. There were requests for training to help with the staff understanding how to set up calendars at the building level, which will help with frequent updates, if there's any changes. The app that was rolled out, I saw a lot of stuff on social media. So please download the app, which will also give you push notifications if anything changes and let you know what's going on. You can just sign up for your student's school if you want or the whole district. Definitely have the whole district because that's where all the days off are. You want to know when those are happening. And you can also pick your school and athletics and a bunch of different information so that you're always in an know. We are, keeping my own handwriting. October second, so I have not gotten an update on this. There was going to be a meeting with students regarding cell phone policy feedback and seeing how that is going. Don't know if anyone has information from that or if I should just wait to find out and then after the next committee meeting. We've had some pretty good progress on principals using the pre-registration for families coming in for building events. There definitely still needs to be some troubleshooting. And so we're looking into that and looking into ways to possibly track buses on their routes. And then we ran out of time, so the rest of our agenda was tabled until our next meeting, which is ten fifteen at, sorry, October fifteenth at nine thirty to eleven thirty, usually in the little theater.
I just want to add to that too. So we do still have some students as well as teachers who have not yet signed the AUP, their acceptable use policy. So I just want to make a reminder and a plea for students and parents to please sign your AUP. What I don't want to do is have to limit the access to your child's technology. It would take twenty-four to forty-eight hours to then release it. And so what happens is your child will either lose opportunity during instructional time or may not be able to work, you know, complete work over a weekend. So I'm asking parents to please go ahead with your child and sign your acceptable use policies as soon as possible.
Just to be super clear, when you say limit access, does that mean shutting off their login to the Greenberg ecosystem? So it doesn't matter if you have a, it doesn't matter if you have a Chromebook or plan to login on your home computer?
So from what I understand, it is, you, I don't know about your home computer, but your district device that might house things like the Google Classroom or things that your teacher needs you to access in that moment would not be operational. And so we don't want to have any gaps in instruction for students.
It sounds like everyone should sign their.
Everybody needs to sign it. Please and thank you.
I was going to ask about the, I was going to ask about the exceptionally acceptable use policy. Is there a way to only target those who have not signed it? Because people who've signed it are getting the additional messages and don't know if their signature is being recorded because they're getting the message?
They're getting the reminders that everybody's getting. But when it's time to like, to shut it off, she has to do it manually, which is, which takes time. So, which is why she also has to release it manually, which takes time. So, and I think that's just a method of the system that's being utilized to track that.
But if you have questions about whether or not you've signed it, like you gave a separate email with your student's name at the bottom. So if you, which looked very different than all other emails. So if you're clicking into your individual student to sign their AUP and you did that, very likely that you already signed it.
Right. Right. But if you're still getting the reminders, I think people are wondering.
Just, should then encourage all their buddies to make sure they sign it so they can stop.
Well, they find what.
And I'm not quite sure how that system works per se, but also if you have multiple students in the district, you have to sign it for each student. So I don't want parents to believe I signed it and I clicked the one link for one child and I've signed it and it's all encompassing because that might not be the case. And I don't want to speculate whether or not parents might still be getting the reminders. I mean, I signed mine and I was still getting the reminders, so.
Great. Okay. Any questions, comments? No? We're going to move on to liaison, building liaisons. First at ECP, we have trustee Mads. And don't be forced to have a liaison report if you.
Not. I mean, a lot going on. We talked about the kitchen being upgraded. Well, it hasn't much upgraded. We renovated, so that's good. But you know, just business as usual for ECP. We got the new fence in front, which is nice, with the little bottle cap project that they put together. They are repainting the mat in the front. My state will be Alaska. I'll be out there.
I'm California.
Oh, you said, oh, that's all right. And all the things. But they're just busy as usual. I think that, yep, they had a back-to-school night and about sixty dads showed up for, what's that they call? Yeah. Thought I was nice to hear that. So, yeah, that's ECP in a nutshell.
And who's the guest trustee, Valerie? Are the clubs starting?
The workshops?
The workshop names?
The paramour files?
Yes, they should be starting.
I know we're approving.
It's on the calendar. It's on the calendar. We're approving it today. Okay.
Who is the Lee F. Jackson liaison?
Lee F. Jackson, October thirteenth through seventeen, PTA's Fall Read-a-thon. So it's happening now. Save the date for October fourteenth through seventeenth is Spirit Week. Flyer with themes that will be sent out. And October seventeenth, the PTA's Trunk or Treat, I mentioned earlier, from six to seven thirty, it says, instead of eight o'clock. And come enjoy a fun evening of trunk or treating, raffle, pumpkin crafts, face art, music, and so much more. So basically.
And the Tuesday.
No, they have, people drive their vehicle in and usually a van is better than a normal car, but you can't really. And they, they give you candy from the trunk and they decorate. They decorate very interesting Halloween themed.
Yeah.
So it's a good place to take, to get a square lot of candy back.
Hyview.
I'm Hyview. I'm just thinking about the wellness policy and then.
Yep. Just don't think about it.
It's a PTA event. It's not a design event.
A little candy's good. A lot of candy's not so.
David's going to take it all anyway, so it's okay.
Hyview. Hyview conducted the third fire drill of the year already. They had, and they have a lock drum drill coming up November sixth. Early, Hyview asks parents that are sending cups with their kids to not send cups that are made of glass because they have two instances of broken glass that had to be cleaned up. So please, if you have glass cups, do not send them, send a plastic instead. They were visited by a dog handler from Therapy Dogs of Brockland and brought a dog named Jude that participated in one or two of the classrooms. The third annual SCL family versus faculty kickball game is Friday, October tenth at two PM. All are invited to attend. And reminder that if you do attend, please do not take your child home from web fields. Let them go back to school first so they can be properly signed out. And that's, that kind of sums it up.
What time is the kickoff?
Two PM.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to R.J. Bailey. Is there a trustee that wants to give her report of R.J. Bailey?
Sure. Picture day was the twenty-fifth. The retake day is November twenty-first. There was a faculty appreciation event on nine twenty-six sponsored by the PTA. And the PTA is also running a walk to school, walk and roll to school day tomorrow. If it does not get rained out, they will notify everyone who is RSVP'd by six AM in terms of whether or not it will happen based on the weather. The after-school enrichment survey went out to families. We have not been notified yet about what activities our kids are in, but it was a mad dash and everyone freaked out. As usual. On the, oh my gosh, I'm losing words today. I'm sorry. On the newsletter, it did mention that the creator Killian Kelly
Yes.
won gold at first ever kids Brazario, I'm probably mispronouncing it, Nogi Brazilian Juzitsu competition in Rio de Janeiro. And won first and is now on his way to try to win two more golds and two other events, which is super cool. Next week is Spirit Week. There is a parent coffee on the seventeenth at nine AM. Traditionally, that's been hybrid. I assume that it will be, but I don't know that for sure.
What's the date on it?
The seventeenth at nine AM. And to look for an email from Principal Rossi about that, my guess is would have typically is in the tech lab with a virtual option. The PTA is doing a pop-up shop around Halloween on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Traditionally, that's been donate any unused or, you know, you donate old Halloween costumes that are in good shape and students can come and pick up free costumes. I assume that's what that is. It's not super clear, but I'm going to assume that's what it is. And then the Halloween parade is on the thirty-first at one PM.
And does any trustee want to give a update on Woodlands Middle High School?
I have Woodlands. Last week, Woodlands hosted an assembly by the JCK Foundation, which promotes mental health wellness in schools by sharing resources and stories of mental health resilience. I know my daughter for once was very thrilled. Right now, the annual college night is happening at Woodlands. It's hosted by the Guidance Department in conjunctions with the Delta Sigma Theta Theta Society.
Sorority.
Sorority. Sorority, sorry. I can't read my own handwriting. And there is a virtual financial aid workshop on Thursday, the ninth, from six thirty to seven. It will be in Spanish and from seven to seven thirty in English. It will be in Spanish and from seven to seven-thirty in English. Woodlands Middle High School, first PTA meeting of the school year will be tomorrow at seven PM in the Innovation Lab. There will be refreshments and a raffle for attendees. I'm not sure what they're raffling. And Spirit Week will also be next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And what students, what the theme is for each day is in the Google Classroom page for each grade.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, let's move on to our lia-
I'm just very sorry.
Let's move on to our liaisons for, I'm gonna say, special items. Like NISBA, WISBA, um, it's another one. Um, BOCS, huh?
PTA Council.
BOCS, PTA Council, trustee Valerie.
Okay, so I'm the Western Spartans School Board Association Liaison. Just a couple of things I'd like to point out. President Verz and I have attended a couple training meetings and affinity group meetings over the last month. It's been a really good kickoff to the year and we both find them valuable to use, to hear, to you, to, to talk to other board members in other districts of sounding boards. So I'm going to really recommend, they revamped the first year board members to be first-term affinity groups. So I know you have three or four of you in your first term. Um, I'm really recommending that you look into the, they have three meetings scheduled. So I recommend you attend those. It's just good to bounce off ideas and hear what other people are doing in other districts. We often find that we are actually pretty well ahead of the game in a lot of respects. Um, so I'm hoping that you guys attend those meetings, you'll hear something similar and be able to offer what we do to others as a good model or to learn from others, things that we could bring back. Um, and then just two other things. This coming Friday, I do want to say, um, there is a training on negotiations, the legal and financial perspective. It's a lunchtime webinar from twelve to one-thirty. If any of you can attend, please contact Ms. Pineda tomorrow or the next day to register. I know, uh, it's this Friday, October tenth, twelve to one-thirty. I believe I am registered. I believe trustee Maris is registered. We might be having back-to-back meetings. But it's a, it sounds like a really good topic to set us up for some things that are on our table. And lastly, I just wanted to inform everybody that, um, I'm also part of the WISBA board. So through that, I have an opportunity tomorrow to meet with our congressperson, George Latimer, as part of our NISBA roundtable to discuss the advocacy points that we want to push across on the federal level. So I'll report back on that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Does anybody know what WISBA is?
Yes. Just a
Oh, listen.
I said at the beginning.
It doesn't matter. What does that mean? Doesn't matter. What does that mean? You know, it's, it, listen, I, there are no dumb questions when it comes to the board. There's a lot happening all the time. And so we say these acronyms, you may not know exactly what it is. It's more of our regional group, you know, we have NISBA. And then the WISBA is more regional, so it's great. Any other liaisons want to report? PTA Council?
Uh, the PTA Council met via Zoom on ten-six-twenty-five at seven PM. They adopted their budget, they discussed fall events where they maintain a wel-, uh, they're, they maintain a welcome booth in several places, the Greenberg Farmers Market, Spooktoberfest, the Homecoming. They'll continue to advocate for full council meetings with the superintendent, but be respectful over time if this is not possible. Uh, the unit delegates reported on individual PTA units and we talked, I talked about that at the CEC. It was, and we've just heard it. The PTA Reflections Program is looking for submissions of student art with the theme I Belong. You have till December to, uh, to get that to them. Tracy Maris gave a brief overview of the Board of Education, monthly meetings and opportunities for the parents to participate. Ayesha Parker offered a fifteen-minute training on project management immediately following the meeting.
Okay, any other liaisons? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to our discussion on NISBA resolutions. Did everybody get a chance? So look at their NISBA resolution packet. That was what?
Nothing.
Oh, that was attached to the agendas pretty long. Uh, but we do have the worksheet here that has the WISBA, the regional, suggestions for the, uh, each resolution. And, um, it talks about supporting the resolution or not, or whether they made no decision. Being that everyone looked through it, does anyone have any specific questions about any specific resolution? Or no? Um, does anyone have any specific question to any specific resolution or how the process is gonna work? No, yes?
I don't understand seventeen. What is that? And how does that impact us in any way?
So number seventeen reads, "NISBA supports limiting a district's potential annual hold harmless phase-out to no more than two percent of their district budget, even if doing so extends that district's overall phase-out period." And WISBA suggests that we oppose the bylaw amendment or resolution. And it's also opposed by the NISBA DEI committee.
But what is it?
What is the
What is that?
Potential annual hold harmless phase-out?
Yeah, what is that?
I don't know. Do you guys know what that is? Um, there is a larger, here's a document. And I don't wanna, yes, trustee Valerie?
I don't, oh, wait, does trustee Long have anything to say on this? Everyone's all chumming a little.
I didn't get to finish that sentence, but go ahead, chime in. Trustee Long, looking.
The whole harmless has to do with the proposed changes to the foundation aid form, formula.
Okay.
And basically, it's the readjustment of taking away from some districts and giving to others based on the formula itself. Whole harmless alludes to the fact that, um, there are just, there are rich districts which would have money taken away from them to be re-portioned here. They want to make sure that they're either held without penalty, i.e. not a reduction from where they are. And this proposal is to limit that to two percent so they could plan out their budget.
So again, the recommendation is that we oppose the, WISBA recommends is opposed by, with, by us and also, um, the NISBA DEI committee says that they also oppose it.
No, it's supported by
Supported by
DEI committee.
They support it.
Said it firm.
The Green Star.
Huh? Well, the star.
Oh, the, the Oneonta School Board?
No.
The Green Star is the Supported by
Oh, the DEI committee supports it and the
WISBA.
The comments provided below from WISBA discussion.
So that was interesting, given that I know the background. And then number twenty-two. So NISBA opposed that. Did they explain why? I think financial literacy is important.
Number twenty-two reads, "NISBA shall support legislative or regulatory changes to add financial literacy into the statewide K through twelve curriculum with additional state funding to support implementation of this new curricular expectation."
Oh, it has a comment too.
Yes, and they have a comment down below. Set, says, "Despite a consensus over the need for financial literacy, we oppose asking legislators to create curriculum mandate. As the board of regents are already planning on requiring financial literacy as part of the graduation measures, the learning standard will not be required."
So is it because it's mandated? They're like, eh, we don't like that.
I don't know, but I know in the summer, when I went to the board leadership conference, they talked a lot about not liking the non-educators putting a mandate on education. They talked about the governor, they talked about all these mandates that get pushed down to the education system. And it's not the educators coming up with the mandate.
And it, I think it also allows space for the, the district or the LEA to own the curriculum and not being mandated by the state to tell us the curriculum. So it gives some autonomy to the local educational agency.
Okay.
So trustee Long is our liaison for NISBA. She's going to be the one placing our vote on this. Do you have any questions or comments or things to bring to our attention?
The choices are support or oppose each. And there's a group of resolutions, um, but before the resolutions, there's a vote on three amendments to the bylaws. Uh, the three amendments are, um, oppose, were opposed, are recommending, the three amendments that are proposed to the bylaws have been recommended to be opposed by the NISBA Committee on Resolutions. So the, the key is, what is our consensus vote that I should enter into each of these items? And I don't know if you read the bylaw proposals or just the resolutions or what, in theory, I have to vote on each and every one
Each and every one, right.
Plus the three amendments.
So, and then the vote is on October sixteenth, I think, sixteen?
October sixteenth.
Um, so I don't know, trustees, do you want to, it's now eight-thirty-two. So do you want to, did you already look at them? Do you, go ahead, Chris, what is it?
I'm just recommending, I, I did not read the amendments.
Oh.
I would
I can summarize.
Saying, as far as the ones, the WISBA recommendations on the resolutions, I would say let's just take a quick up or down vote between us on the ones that are in grasp that didn't have a determination by WISBA. Unless there were others, unless you had a difference of opinion with WISBA and the ones that were not in dispute. That's my recommendation. What were you saying, trustee Long?
On the resolutions, NISBA doesn't take a position. They only put some as putting forward and some that were not put forward. The first seven of them are resolutions that were intended to be sunsetted that one of the school boards said, let's not sunset this. So that one is a vote on, it's a consensus vote. So they're grouped them all together and it's one vote, yea or nay. Because in theory, they've all, they've all, not theory, they've already been approved as resolutions. So the question is, do we accept it? So the first seven are just a yes or no, uh, as a group. And then the individuals are a yes or no from resolution eight through resolution twenty-three. And anything beyond twenty-three, the committee did not approve to put forward. Uh, we can, if we wish, to ask for one of those to be pulled forward to be voted. I don't, I didn't read anything in any of those that came out as anything we should say that yes, we want to have.
So on the first, so the first section, seven, do you recommend that we support them as recommended by WISBA?
Yes, it's just, it's resolutions that exist.
Does anybody have any concerns around any of them? No? And number eight through twenty-three, is that?
Eight through twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yes.
I'm just gonna start voting.
Go ahead and vote.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna continue my sentence. Um, do you have any recommendation for?
I, I think we should look at each one so everyone can offer their thoughts.
So we're gonna go through each one. So now, it's now eight-thirty-four. So number eight, "NISBA shall advocate for the number of lockdown drills to be reduced from four to two each year." Do you have any recommendation?
My recommendation is oppose.
Okay. Does anybody have any?
I agree, we should oppose.
Yes, trustee, um, Jacobson?
I think we should reduce them from four to two. They are not proven to work. We could have more lockdown drills.
So is it?
They're proven not to work.
There's no evidence that the lockdown drills work in protecting students from active shooters. There is no evidence to support that. It just re-traumatizes students. So unless there is data out there that says otherwise, I don't think we should be doing four each year. We can do two. I would prefer zero, so I'll take two.
Trustee?
I'll be here all night. All right. It's just oppose or support.
Support?
I'm supporting. I don't have another one to happen. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Wait, are you supporting the amendment to reduce or are you supporting having four?
Keep the four.
So you oppose.
Whatever it is.
Keep the four.
You oppose.
That's it.
Why are you saying that?
Because I just think this is a bad process, but whatever. Um, no, I, I actually agree with you on the number, but, um, so you said two, you say two, you say two, you say?
No, they said four, four, two, two.
Hold on. You say four?
Four, four, four. I said, yes, oppose.
I misunderstood.
It's written weird.
Oppose the resolution and leave it as it is.
Thank you. Four?
Four.
Thank you, two.
Two.
Two. I say four, four, four. So we're going with four. Um, next one, yes, thank you. Um, next one is, "NISBA support legislation which will allow creation of regional high school and determined by the local board of events to be educationally fiscally responsible."
My recommendation is support.
Anyone object or want to oppose? Moving on. "In light of extreme heat condition days, unfund and mandate that NISBA support the state providing school districts and bushes of necessary funding to allow for air conditioning and appropriate electrical needs in all schools." Recommendation, support. Trustee Long, anyone want to oppose? No. "NISBA support the state to safely incorporate AI into the curriculum and district operations." Recommendation, true. Uh, trustee Long?
Support.
Does anybody oppose? Okay, let's talk about it. Here's one support. What's your opinion?
I think we should address the topic. I don't think the AI is nearly as advanced.
Are you, are deciding?
It should be used for.
Do you support it as look, looking into, to the
Yeah, look into it.
Trustee Jacobson?
I think reading the comments, it, it's, my concern is just that, that legislation, what we've experienced today might not be up to the speed at which this is changing and we're gonna limit ourselves. I, I don't
No, undecided.
Undecided.
Trustee Valerie?
I have to say the same too. If, if this, I believe the way it's stated is to talk about law, legislation. I'm okay with my said guidance. So if, if I'm interpreting this correctly, then I oppose because I want guidance but not law.
Okay, trustee Semmelier.
Oppose.
Trustee Mance?
Oppose.
There's three oppose, one undecided, I'll oppose two, so oppose. Um, next we go with, it's supported, recommendation is support. Oppose proposal that would provide tuition tax credits or educational vouchers that benefit private or parochial schools.
Support.
Anybody object? Great. "NISBA shall advocate to the New York State Education Department, the United State Department of Agriculture and federal legislators for the reinstatement of whole milk as an allowable option in school breakfast and lunch programs in addition to existing low-fat options, the recognition of, of, blah, updated nutritional science supporting the safety and benefits of whole milk in the diets of children and adolescents." Recommendation is opposed.
I support.
But that's, does anybody want to oppose?
Oppose, oppose.
I support. No.
We don't even chew our milk.
I'm confused.
Waste some money. Are they drinking the milk now?
No, they throw it out.
Wait, wait, go ahead. Go ahead.
They're supporting changing to whole
To whole, allowing whole milk as an option.
The milk they serve now is water.
Two percent.
Yeah, but they're just gonna throw out whole milk too.
That's what I feel like.
I think so.
So we're gonna go whole or no. So whole milk, whole milk or no?
No.
Whole milk or no? Whole milk or no?
No.
Whole milk.
I'm a whole milk too, and you say no, so we say no.
I want some almond milk.
Nope, nope, whole milk.
Wait, so
Oppose. Next we have, "NISBA shall advocate for amendments to the New York State Ed. Regulations to allow a set of, a set amount of daily recess time to thirty minutes a day to count toward required instructional hours for elementary students." Recommendation?
Oppose, it's under law, so.
Recommended to oppose. Trustee Alongs has opposed. Does anybody else support it? Okay, let's keep going. "NISBA shall advocate for the following policy changes. Substantial increases in state reimbursement rates for out-of-district special education placements to reflect true and current costs including transportation and related services by way of reform. It's a fa- formula particularly to districts facing a high proportion of closely mandated placements relative to total enrollment. This will directly affect us, actually. They have no decision." What do you recommend, trustee Long?
I recommend we support this one just because of our scenario. The, the opposition was that this should be addressed in foundation aid. I think it should be addressed.
It is, but we're, we don't benefit from it.
So I agree. I think we should support So, I agree, I think we should support this.
Support.
If I understand it by that, then support.
Support. Trustee support.
Support.
Okay. NISBA, NISBA seek, number sixteen, "NISBA seek and promote legislation to reform what?" "NISBA seek and promote legis- legislation to reform current legal notice publication requirements." No decision, trustee along, what's your recommendation?
Support.
Anyone oppose?
Oppose.
Okay, let's go around.
What did I ask them, they, they wanna get rid of the old newspaper, that we have to pay to put things in newspapers, because most local newspapers have disappeared. So, they're lobbying to remove the, it's not remove the newspaper requirement, but to open the flexibility of the.
We'd all agree with the comment, that while we understand the difficulty of finding local papers nowadays, older community members, non-parents, are more likely to see school information in newspapers, and school districts could be open to accusations of finding information if it is difficult to find on their website.
Okay, support, what do you say?
I say oppose.
Oh, I thought you said, okay.
Oh, sorry, sorry, support, yes.
Okay, support.
I want to keep the requirement that they be in the newspaper.
Oppose. Newspaper or no newspaper?
Yes, newspaper, thank you. These are written so goofy.
Newspaper.
Okay, that's four.
That's four.
Okay, sorry, trustee Vance, do you wanna share?
How, it's okay.
Okay. What was I, seventeen, "NISBA supports limited district potential annual hold," huh, we talked about that. Um, number eighteen, "NISBA advocate."
Well, do we agree with the opposed recommendation?
I'm still kinda confused of what that actually would look like.
Money from a more.
No, but based on this, does this mean that the district?
Why do they just climb so fast?
Wouldn't lose any of their money, or they just wouldn't be allowed to have enough, it's written in such a like.
Rich districts that may lose money, they could lose all of the money, or this is proposing, you lose a little bit at a time. They're saying, "We don't wanna lose any money at all, so we're gonna, so vote no on this, 'cause we want the whole thing changed."
So, recommendation is oppose, what do you say, trustee along?
I, I, I'm on the fence on this one.
Well, that's not good.
Well, it's, it's, I'm only, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote whatever, a majority must decide, I, I, um, I'm on the fence on this one, uh, 'cause what they're saying is that, uh, if we oppose this, there's no lobbying whatsoever for the whole harmless, so it, it removes it from the, the agenda altogether.
Well, 'cause but.
So, you don't wanna oppose it?
No, I, 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 the argument is, we don't wanna support it, because we'd rather they do something else, but if you don't support it, there is nothing else this year, so.
'Cause why aren't we concerned that local wasn't going to maintain it and we were going to lose money? And so, like, I don't like the idea they're not being an alternative, like, it says, we'll look into other things, but like, that could be nothing.
There is no alternative, but this is, this is, support this, or if there is nothing on this subject to be lobbied on this year.
So, let's continue to think about it, we'll come back, 'cause it's almost nine o'clock and we have to make some very important decisions this evening. So, later it gets, the more difficult it's gonna be. Number eighteen, "NISBA advocates for budget threshold to protect rural districts with low enrollment and large geographical footprints in the foundation aid formula," what's your recommendation? Trustee along, WISBA says oppose.
Um, WISBA, oh, we're at eighteen, sorry, wrong one. Uh, this is, this links right back to the save harmless, I could.
Oppose.
Okay, anyone wanna support it? No, number nineteen, "NISBA supports legislation allowing."
I would support.
Okay, let's talk, um, so, we have one oppose, one support.
Again, it's very little detail, what is the budget threshold?
A budget threshold.
What would that look like? Like, it, I don't know how you.
It's probably a formula that I got, I don't know.
I don't know.
So, let's go around, so we have one oppose, one support, do you wanna think about it?
I guess I'm gonna oppose, 'cause there's no other information.
Okay, trustee.
I'll oppose until they remove their word rural and large geographical footprints.
Trustee Semmelier, do you, okay, it's four opposes, let's keep going. Um, number nineteen, "NISBA supports legislation allowing school districts to receive compensation from New York Liquidation Bureau for liability insurance claims arising out of claims brought under the Child Victims Act in cases where the insurance company holding the policy became insolvent and its estate was executed by the liquidation bureau." Recommendation is support. Anyone oppose? No, keep going, "NISBA supports an amendment to New York State law that would authorize public school districts to establish and fund health insurance reserve funds through board-approved resolutions." Recommendation, support.
Support.
Anyone wanna oppose? No, "NISBA urged the New York State Legislature to amend General Municipal Law Section 6J to explicitly include BOCEs among the entities authorized to establish and maintain workers' comp reserve funds," recommendation to support. Anyone oppose? No, number twenty-two, "NISBA shall."
I just wanna say that if that does go through, does that mean the BOCEs, be going up too?
Do you wanna oppose it? We can oppose.
I'm gonna oppose it, I'll follow that.
Do you wanna oppose it?
I'm being opposed.
Okay, oppose, let's talk about it, do you wanna oppose or support? Trustee along?
I would support it.
Trustee Warner?
Support.
Jacobson?
I don't know.
Valid.
Support reluctantly.
What, I mean.
And Semmelier, support, okay, that's four.
I don't need that.
Let's keep going, number twenty-two, good, good point though, number twenty-two, "NISBA shall support legislative or regulatory changes to add financial literacy into the statewide curriculum with additional state funding to support implementation of this new curricular expectation." Albany, actually.
The, uh.
Recommendation is oppose.
Oppose, yes, and I, but for the same reasons that lobbying for curriculum.
Does anybody wanna support it? No, let's keep going, "NISBA supports legislation at a state level that allows school districts to choose to authorize school medical directors and their clinical discipline to evaluate, diagnose, temporarily treat, and prescribe medications for students on campus in accordance with New York State law," the recommendation is to oppose.
I agree.
Anyone wanna support it?
No.
Hearing none, number seventeen, back to number seventeen, do we wanna abstain from the vote, there is an abstention option. Is there anyone that feels strongly to oppose or support?
Here's one thing, if we're opposing eighteen, and you might as well do seventeen, they go neck and neck, right, kind of hand in hand.
Oppose, so trustee along, do you oppose or support? Trustee?
Who, I, go around to the others, yeah.
We'll come back, trustee Warner? Recommendation is oppose.
Okay, oppose.
Trustee Jacobson?
So, trustee along, what you had said, that opposing it maintains that it will be revisited, supporting it means that it will no longer be part of the question, part of the conversation.
No. Uh, if you support it, uh, then they will lobby on this subject this year. If we oppose it, there's no alternative, so it take, it comes off of the agenda for NISBA and their conversations with, uh, our lawmakers.
But only for this year, right?
For this year.
Yeah, because one came up again, I saw last year, it's on here, and that's that thirty minutes recess.
So, if it fails, it will be another conversation.
Anyway.
Support or oppose?
So, then oppose.
Trustee valid.
That convinced me, oppose.
Trustee Semmelier, okay, you have four. Wonderful, is there a motion to adjourn to, is there any more comments, questions, or concerns?
Just a reminder, that the three bylaw, if you need those, two of them are very related, and just let me know what you're thinking on the three bylaws that are.
Do you have a recommendation?
Oppose all three.
I agree with you.
All right.
Well, I'm one person.
So, everyone needs to read them, and we could email you if we feel differently than an oppose.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, trustee along, for taking on this.
I said it last year, you're gonna be on the call for like six hours.
Is this or this?
You already went to like the pre meeting, right?
No, it's Thursday, no, no, not the voting one. And Thursday's the pre meeting.
I move that we adjourn to a second discussion and discuss collective bargaining negotiations, the employment district, particular persons, personnel matters in our employee records, and matters deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice from counsel.
We're properly moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Oppose, and extension motion carries, and executive session is eight fifty. First item on the agenda is F-one, personnel instructional items, can I get a motion?
Second.
It's been properly moved, second, is there any discussion?
I have some.
Yes. You have an instructional personnel item?
Yeah, I do. It is going to be G-four, appointment of curricular, co-curricular activities at the high school. Two things, one, animal club, I don't see it, um, is it coming, is there a plan, what's going on with that? The animal care club, that's what it's called.
Will we have one for this school here?
No, we do not have an animal care club, there's no advisors.
Okay.
For that club.
And no alternative whatsoever?
No alternative right now, because there's been tried to recruit, building's trying, but, um, if there, if people are aware of any one, any alternative option, please reach out, but as of right now, no.
Okay, and then the second question, 'cause this was a lot of numbers, yeah, same, G-four, same thing, um, a lot of numbers, I didn't calculate it, but how much comes out of the general fund for the co-curricular activity?
All of it.
No, what's the total?
Ninety-four, it's in the not to exceed, right, not to exceed the portion in the resolution itself?
Ninety-four per charge, yeah.
Not to exceed ninety-four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, okay, I'm done.
No, you have G-seven as well.
I do.
G-seven.
I know, we have G-seven.
What are, what are?
Oh, yes, G-seven, the appointment of the IBI advisors, so, um, it says that IBI advisors, blah, 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 they can receive either a hundred dollars for every two students, one in-service credit for up to two students, and then two in-service credits for three or more, just wants to know what in-service credits consist of.
So, in-service credits are, um, they, they go towards salary credits, so it's similar to teacher-taking professional learning, with, it's a contractual item.
Okay.
So, they receive, um, credits towards salary increase, increase or advancement.
Okay, so it could go either towards professional development, it's not like extra.
It's similar, um, no, this is towards salary adjustments.
Gotcha, okay.
So, on this scale, it has by year, they, it go, you, you move lanes?
Lanes and steps.
And steps, so you move steps down.
So, it's a step.
By year, is it down?
There, the steps go down, one, two, three, four.
By year, right, so year one, you're here, year two, you're there, so you go up, you get in, and you can also go up and over, so you can get more money by year, just by time, you just get more money, or if you get credits.
Credits are.
You get more money, and then you can go up.
Master degree plus fifteen.
Yes, I remember those.
So, people get to move up to fifteen credits, they can shift to, so none of them, yeah.
So, she has a question, is it a permanent move, once they get a credit?
Not an in-service credit isn't a permanent move though, right, but graduate credit is.
In-service a certain number of hours is equivalent to the graduate credit, yeah.
I don't know.
A certain number of hours, it's in the, it's in the contract.
It's all contractual, yeah.
She's gonna look better, okay.
No, no problem.
And lastly, um, how are we doing?
It's article six.
MBK, the other program.
The other.
I don't, 'cause it's.
There are two, there's the fellows, and then the fellows with the two young men and the two mentors that are being approved tonight.
Yes.
Those, that one is, is, um, right? Um, they're gonna start their mastermind series, et cetera, so that one is in place.
Okay.
Uh, as communicated last year, FACE, last year was the final year of FACE in terms of, um, grant funds.
Okay.
Right, so we haven't heard anything additional from New York State Ed outside of the desire to put out the RFP, but nothing has been communicated. However, you will see on the board agenda, a call to action facilitators.
Yeah.
These are individuals within our community who are willing, teachers to, willing to come together to kind of facilitate, um, given we are MBK community, approved community, um, to see what we could do moving forward. We don't have an answer yet, but just seeing what we could do if money is granted versus if it's not, just being able to see what, um, other resources we have.
No, I was reading this, I didn't realize this was call to action is different, so call to action works up facilitators at the contractual, uh, rate of fifty-three dollars not to exceed ten per individual, for the total not to exceed fifteen ninety, and where is that coming from, Title One?
That's coming from Title One, excuse me, that's coming from Title One, um, as part of our effort to continue, you know, to see how we continue, what, how we can continue, but basically, the goal is for an action plan of some sort, um, but we don't know the degree of.
Well, because we don't know.
We have to count the cost, yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose, any extension, motion carries, next, we have items F-two, personal non-instructional items.
I move that we approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
So, we're properly moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose, any extension, motion carries, next item is F-three, board action items.
I move that we approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
We're properly moved in second, is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to know about the budget code transfers, that's the kind of, kind of thing. So, the maintenance supplies that are coming from each school, can you give an example of what those supplies were?
Sure, so I pulled, um, I pulled the records from last year to see what vendors we were paying out of there. Um, so the vendors I'll be speaking about are Granger, um, Sherwin-Williams, Sintas, and Sterling Supplies. So, Granger is very similar to like a Home Depot, so we recently bought ceiling tiles from there, bolts, nuts, et cetera. Um, Sterling is all paper products, like toilet paper, tissues, garbage bags. Um, Sintas is where we get our facilities' uniforms from. Um, contractually, they are allowed four uniforms a year, and Sherwin-Williams is paint.
Okay, so, removing that from each of the schools, um, do we anticipate that we might need, I don't know, more uniforms, more paint, I think, I mean, we got a lot of stuff.
So, what I did, the reason why I chose those code, those codes, we don't use furniture codes here, and, um, it seems like it's been past practice that furniture that was not, um, applicable to an equipment code has been previously taken from a supply code. So, those four codes, um, on last year's ending balance on June thirtieth, had considerable amounts remaining in them, so that, you know, they are non-instructional codes, it feels like they were the appropriate codes to choose, um, you know, the total budget transfer, there was, um, just under twelve thousand that could be applied to an equipment code, and then the rest wasn't applicable because of the threshold that we have for equipment.
Okay, um, so about fifty-six thousand, I've just rounded it, you're moving around. Um, now, that's the fund, that's in shares for three classrooms at the high school, I don't know if you guys, you know.
So, I did ask, um, it's not exactly three classrooms, even though that's what had originally come through on the requisition. From what I'm, I'm led to believe, is it's seven classrooms that has different needs in each classroom, and what they would be doing is, it would be dealt with on a lottery basis, so that there was equity across the board. Um, so basically, out of these seven classrooms, it would be a lottery as to who got what. It would be spread amongst the group. And.
The question, the question was, how are you deciding which classrooms would get the furniture? And she said it would be done by lottery.
Yes, he says he has seven classrooms that have a need for something, um, so those seven classrooms would be part of a lottery, and that would make it.
Fair.
Fair for everybody, so that one classroom didn't feel slated over the other.
And what building you're in?
Um, it's all in the high school middle school.
This is all.
They're the ones that requested.
In the middle school, on the third floor.
Middle high school.
I don't know exactly which rooms, he didn't specify, he just said seven classrooms.
Okay.
Trustee valid.
Sorry, um, you mentioned that on June thirty, the balances were remaining, I believe the supply lines are the lines, I could, I could be misremembering. I believe the supply lines are the lines that we cut in the budget, because we saw there would be a surplus, do you know, do the. Do you know, did the starting balance, because you're taking money from this current school year, did the starting balances, were they similar?
The lines that I noticed were cut were not supply lines, they were utility lines.
So knowing that we don't have a furniture line, is that something, I know we're getting ready to kind of restructure those capital project codes.
Just appropriation lines in general too, so that they're more specific.
When it becomes time to start looking at the budget, we could decide how we want to move forward as far, um, the time to do it typically, if you're going to change your budget codes would be at the beginning of a school year.
Right.
So we would create the codes going into the budget season and those codes would technically take effect on July first. If we create codes and change them prior, like in our current school year, there's a lot of transfers that need to happen, so it's just a little bit cleaner to do the work now and then have it start at the beginning of a school year.
And then just last thing, so the teaching regular school district equipment, what would that, what expenses would go on there?
So the, um, this is a district wide.
Yeah.
Code that they use and, um, again, next year when I'm looking to build next year's budget, I prefer to have a building equipment budget line to have it separated out by budget. The way they do it now is they budget in one district wide code and then the buildings request and we do a transfer from the district wide code to the building code. So each building does have a two hundred code. Um, I'm told that our past practice here has been that our equipment threshold is five hundred dollars. I will be honest with you, I cannot find that in writing anywhere, um, but I have been told that that has been the past practice for at least sixteen years. So what that basically means is any item that costs under five hundred dollars, such as an eighty dollar chair, maybe, um, a hundred and fifty dollar student desk, is not eligible to be used in an equipment code. So, um, they have very strict guidelines for what type of items and it's usually a board policy determines what your equipment threshold is and we're using five hundred currently. So that's why out of the entire order, the only items that could be included in the two hundred code were the larger teacher desks. The other items, they were too, their cost was, their unit cost was too low to be considered equipment.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, like if we have this district line, why not take the fifty-six K from there and.
I would have loved to have done that, but unfortunately, we would be written up by our auditors if we did that.
But the thing is your order is not on a per, you're not paying for each desk and chairs individually, you're not getting five hundred invoices, you're getting one bold invoice, right?
Right, but it's not communicative when it comes to a equipment threshold.
Okay, so is that looking at it on a per unit basis? No matter if you purchase order has.
No matter.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay, any more questions, comments regarding board action? No, hearing none, all those in favor?
Right.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries. Next we have, oh, item for our next meeting. We've got to find the page. Um, item J one, minutes, you have some questions about your section.
Uh huh.
Oh, you're ready? Okay, stop, just stop me when you, when I get to. J one, um, minutes for the next meeting. J two, treasurer's report. J three, warrant report. J four, change order. J, J five, donation. J six, donation. J seven, surplus equipment.
I want J seven.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, what number? Did you have something?
Yeah, you were, you were on a roll.
Sorry, which number, J?
J three.
Three.
The warrant reports and I'm going to try to remember now because it's late and it's somewhere back in the cloud webs. On the Tobin claims adjuster report was, I don't know, maybe chance anyone's got it open, it was like the last item on the list.
Is there one of the ones where they tell us what, the ones that had the average or something like that?
Yes, yes, and that they, they say that this is the reason why they held it and that X was given. Um, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't remember what it is.
Was that vendors, two of them on there that we have a contract for? Questioning.
No.
Uh, I got it, I got it, yeah, hold on. No, I do.
Yeah, she gets to print it.
I have it, I can do that, but she'll be back here.
It sounds like it's a claims auditor report.
Yeah.
Were there one cycle of one you were looking at?
Yep, like the bottom one, the second bottom one.
Is it a contractor, one of those?
Claims auditor, yep, Tobin something.
I have it, I have it.
You have it open?
Yeah. I don't know, I don't have it.
I know when I, when I see it.
I found it this morning and I saw two people on there.
Oh, claim side.
Yeah, that thing.
Uh, oh, I can't school of med, of med at M T something. It says no board approval for service for the finding and then it says signed service agreement with rates provided by purchasing and then allowed. So they said no board approval and I was curious of why that might be, there was no board approval on that item.
I'll have to look into that.
I remember, I remember seeing a contract last year. Were they looking for a new one?
I don't know, the claims, the claims auditor stopped it and says they were.
Didn't find it, they didn't find the board approval. But when they put it on there, don't they, if I'm not mistaken, there was a column where they got corrected.
Yes.
And then they would move forward, right?
However, I would say that our audit, our, our audit reported our claims auditing.
Oh, yeah.
What was the vendor name on that one?
I C A N. I C A N. I H C A N.
Well, I'm trying to see if it's spelled wrong, maybe that's the problem, so.
Is it I H?
I C A H N.
I C A H N?
I C A.
Yeah, maybe it's spelled wrong.
Is that one of them?
Yes.
I think it's.
Yeah, because that usually gets renewed every year.
Yeah. So do we want to, so this for next meeting?
July one.
So we're looking to. It was approved July one. If, if, if it's for, sorry, just, she's going to, she's going to look at it, July one, item N, like Nancy four, I don't know if the services on that resolution are the services that were billed on that invoice, that's.
Okay.
So that's for next meeting. Is there anything else? J four, J five, J six, now, no, J seven, trustee man?
Yes, J seven. Um, it might be a terminology thing. Surplus equipment facilities department, this is in reference to two non-working ice machines. So my question is, should it be called surplus or should it be something like obsolete? I don't know if surplus is the right term now because.
I don't disagree with you. Um, I will say that the one, all of our disposals that I was able to look up and see, it looks like our practice here is to use the word surplus. Um, but I agree with you, there is a difference between surplus and obsolete and something that we are acknowledging has no value, um, or is non-working would, would, uh, be called obsolete and not surplus.
And then just again, thinking about, I know you guys have an asset management spreadsheet now.
Yes.
So it says that the, um, we're going to update the inventory list for this. When will that happen? Will that happen once you guys remove the ice machines or now that you know it's obsolete? Like how does that help?
No, usually, um, actually, it would happen sooner probably because it's being board approved tonight. So probably within, um, twenty-four to forty-eight hours, the treasurer will be notified that the item has been board approved and she at that point would go on and update the spreadsheet. I don't personally know how long it takes for someone to come pick up the machines. I would assume that probably takes a few days.
This is going to be on the next agenda.
Oh, so it would be after, whatever agenda it's approved on, we notify them to make the change. Same as like if it was a donation, the next day we're making action.
That's what was going to be our suggestion.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed, any?
I suppose I was.
Oh, so sorry, you guys just fell by your line of.
Well, yes, yes.
Guys, is there any new business? K, K one, hearing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Right.
Is we properly moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any oppose, any extension, motion carries. Good night, eleven twenty.
Eleven twenty.